All right, it is 6:00 PM. Too loud, it's still too loud.
Yeah, that's a little loud. Some people instantly, okay?
At 6:00 PM, we are called to order for this city council meeting on Monday, May 19th. We have the forum and then we're going to start it. Lights are on, please remember that these mics pick up everything, whispers, hushes, whatever, but we're going to be broadcasting. Let's see, so we're going to go ahead and go through the agenda items, see if anybody has any questions. Starting with public hearing. Continue public hearing, coordination of ordinance, amending the ordinance, zero port weight to the 2-2 zone, and then plan development, any questions about that?
I was just going to ask if we can talk to legal.
Yeah, I planned it. I'd like to take y'all into closed during workshop under our Texas government code.
Oh, right now?
Zero seven.
We can do it now.
What do you know? It's together.
I would like to say though-
Attorney consultation on this item.
While we're still in public that all the correspondence that I have received and I've reached out to some of them, they were completely unaware of what we were actually voting on. And it wasn't, you know, it's all about the high rise, that it isn't even our charge on this. So I've had that conversation with several of them, they didn't realize that.
Can I take the liberty, just to finish?
Sure.
So before we go into closed session, just the, that point actually is, kind of rolls into what I was going to say. So on this item specifically, I know we're going to have a briefing and open out there with Richard as well as with the developers representative. We, some of the information we provided in your backup was not accurate, and I wanted to clarify that. So one of the statements was that we had, the city had received a warrant study for the traffic, the warrant study was done by the developer, we have received it now, but we have not had a chance to review it. I will say at first blush, it looks right and everything seems to be kosher.
TIA?
No, so there's the full TIA for the entire realm area, which there, they have submitted a scope on that, and they, not the full TIA, so that was another point. And they are, right now, the developers, engineer and our engineers are working on what that scope looks like. They're primarily done, but it won't be done by next meeting or anything like that. But that actually will not be relevant to this. The scope does not address this. This is really focused on a warrant study. That warrant study has been turned in now, but we haven't had a chance to look at it. So that, plus the fact that I think a lot of the residents are not really fully understanding, grasping from some of the comments that made about what the context of what they're discussing today, I think it would be beneficial to hold this one more meeting, to review that, to allow the public to hear what the developer's proposing, what the staff is saying, like the context of what you're deciding on. And that's my recommendation, I know it previously said something else, but, and then also, just to make sure we tighten up all of the, some of the notes that were in our concept plan, reference a TIA that was submitted, it's not, it's not accurate. So we need to make sure our exhibits are also completely accurate before going forward.
And I would like to say, there was numerous people today, and I would show them where the backup, this is the first that they've ever seen that. It was, there's a lot of information out there, a lot of scary stuff out there, a lot of misinformation, but none of it had to do with what we were voting on, is the second trial. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Also, one Meyer comment, the staff presentation backup says 5:15 and the other one says 5:19. Is that, which?
I don't know which backup you're talking about.
This one here? Was that meant for, was that meant for tonight or was that already done?
That was a presentation that's been given, we have updated it today.
Okay.
To make sure that we're, I think we added one more slide with regard to comparing GB, oh no, GB2.
So you're recommending that we continue this to the next meeting?
Yes.
Well, can we still go until they go down?
Yeah. We want a closed session. There we go. All right, we're agreed again, folks, we're back in, back in workshop. Thank you for hanging with us when we had the closed hearing. So we're back on the agenda, so agenda one, any other questions for staff regarding agenda one? We'll deliver this forum, we have consent agenda, agenda we're going to be doing quickly. Item two, approval amendment for the professional services agreement. Questions from the staff?
Is this the last amendment? We think?
There are none, or one, I guess. Item three, approval of contract with Log Tree Studios.
Love it.
Consent agenda four, approval of contract with Les Jardines de Pascalay in the amount of $50,000. Thank you. Just two years of high school, French for you right there. Item five, approval of reimbursement agreement with Denton County Chaperation Authority.
Those trip buttons?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
Item six, ratification of a concession agreement between CF Lake Park, Arcus LLC and City Louisville.
Do we have any control over who they do stuff, vendors that do stuff without their product vendors, stuff they do stuff with?
One.
One particular, they did, we did an agreement with, not too long ago, that much rather than, but their decision.
With Arcus, Arcus itself?
Yeah, it is something where they vendor out there, kind of kind of event out there, things like too kosher, but.
Because it's a special event, we have to go through the special event permit, but other than that, they can choose who they're with.
Okay, okay.
Item seven, approval of fiscal year 2025 media supplemental appropriations.
I want to have a presentation.
Item eight, approval of resolution of the city council of Louisville, amending section seven.
Claire, did you say we're going to have a presentation on number seven?
No, number seven, the presentation is in workshop. On the supplement.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that was not clear.
Regular hearing, item nine, consideration alternative standards associated with landscape standards for Sam's Club. Item 10, consideration of alternative standards associated with landscape standards for Starship Bagel.
That was the interest in, right?
Yeah, why is that? Item 11, consideration and take action on the ordinance of the city council of City Louisville, authorizing issuance of City Louisville Texas general obligation refunding improvement bonds. Item 12, consider take action on the ordinance of city council of City Louisville, Texas, authorizing issuance in sale of City of Louisville waterworks sewer system, revenue refunding improvement bonds. Item 13, consideration of a resolution nominate one member of the board to manage the Denko area 911.
We're actually nominating Steve Southwell.
Steve Southwell, yeah.
Great.
We'll do item G reports, and we do have, I think, two additional closed session items.
Yes, sir.
Could be contested. All right, we mean as needed. Right, so we are on to...
Are we on to, like, see?
The solid waste, we started collection service update.
Good evening, Mayor, to the council. So as you are well aware, we did have some service issues with our solid waste collection. So we wanted to bring Republican to give you guys an update, kind of explain what happened and what we're, what they're working on to fix the issue and give you a status update on that. So today, presenting, I have Modesto Dominguez, he is the area vice president, and then Chuck So is the general manager, and Michael Hernandez is the operations manager. So wanted to give you guys an, the option to, or the ability to hear directly from them and then ask them questions directly, so.
Good evening. As Aaron mentioned, Modesto Dominguez, area vice president for the state of Texas for Public Services. Chuck Zaw is general manager over our Louisville kind of location, and then Mike Hernandez is over this, this specific contract. So appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to come in and talk about your recycling and trash contract. As Aaron mentioned, I know we had some service issues at the beginning of the year resulting in a cure letter being issued, so we wanted to talk to how we respond to that cure letter and more importantly, what we're going to do moving forward. Before we jump into the meat, kind of, of the, of the presentation, I want to talk about a couple of things that kind of led to the cure period. Not excuses, just, just things that happened. Chuck Zaw was out for an extended period of time, so our general manager was out. We sent some leadership here from, from Houston to help support that leadership, probably not as experienced as they need to be to, to deal with some of the situations that came up. We took on the Castle Hill contract, which is always tough, bringing on, right, a new contract and kind of integrated into the fold. But most importantly, our ops manager that we had fired to Michael, so Michael's fairly new, was in over his head, right? So the contract was, right, too big for him, and he didn't, he didn't reach out or ask for help when the situation got pretty dire. So this is kind of what we did in response to that, and then any questions you might have?
Good evening, Council Mike Hernandez, operations manager. So just here, for the immediate remedy, we, we brought in outside resources. So what that means is that we brought in people from around the DFW area, even outside the state, to kind of help us with the staffing. What that did was able to get us fully staffed for this contract, and we were able to do that. And so with that, we were also able to add an extra route just for the NPUs. So that way, our lead driver can have time to even verify any missed pickups or any late set outs at a proper, at appropriate time, so that way we can get those escalations down.
So one of the things that happened, right, when Chuck was out and the ops manager wasn't asking for help is, we weren't staffing, right? So we were losing drivers and we weren't bringing drivers on fast enough. And so we got, got ourselves in a situation where we were short a significant amount of drivers. So we couldn't cover not only the City of Louisville, but other contracts. We, we were short probably 15 to 20 drivers. So no one raised their hand and said, I need help, right? Again, that's, that's all me, I'm ultimately responsible, but that's what led to us having to bring people from outside of the area.
And with that being said, we also were able to hire new logistics analysts too, to help just make sure that we're following the maps, and we also have a program that we can see breadcrumbs, and we started using that just to teach the new drivers, because some of the areas in Castle Hills is alley service and street side service. So just getting those new drivers accommodated to the new routes, we amplified that, so that way we can limit missed pickups. We also pretty much blitzed the area with the, with the leadership. We have a total of six supervisors, so we'd go around and make sure that service was complete at the appropriate time. We also had various contact with city as well, just to make sure that we were addressing those missed pickups in a timely manner. So once again, we're, we're still using the GPS breadcrumbs, so that way we can verify that all streets are getting serviced at the appropriate time. We are training drivers too, so just in case any drivers go out on PTO, those route drivers can go and enjoy their PTO, and we all have backup drivers that know the area as well, so to eliminate any missed pickups moving forward. We also are going to bring in a new supervisor. We have to bring in a team that is willing to perform at this, at this level of this contract. So we are making some adjustments on the leadership side, but it's going to be good leadership. And then we're also, we know there was some confusion on the, on the call center, so we're doing some secret shopping. We'll call the call center, pretend like a customer to verify that those, those customers are getting addressed appropriately as well. Yes, ma'am?
I have a comment on the call center. In the last eight months or so, anytime that I have called the call center, I was absolutely not able to get to a human.
When was the most recent time you called?
Do what?
The most recent time you called?
I ended up calling you saying missed pickup. Couple of months back?
Couple of months back, yeah. So hopefully that's fixed, and that was also brought up, brought to my attention. So we have a consolidated call center, and so we did, we had meetings with that supervisory team over those, of those call agents, and did some retraining, and then added some kind of just specific blurb for Louisville, so anytime someone calls from this area code, it pulls up specific instructions for this contract. So hopefully that's gotten better. And that's what you're talking about, the secret shopper, Jerry's calling in pretending to be a customer to make sure that the calls are getting through.
I can tell you, most of the commentary I got was exactly what she was talking about.
You can't, I mean, I have not once been able to get through, not once, actually, since 2021.
They felt like they weren't being heard.
I, I hope that's changed, and if it hasn't, if you can let, you can let me know. One other thing that happened, again, not, not excuses, just, just what happened, we, we converted from one phone system to another phone system, which is incredibly bad timing for the service issues we're having at the same time. So it was, we were having service call delays, or I'm sorry, call delays across the country because we were transitioning from those two phone systems. But from what I understand, now the system is working as it should, so I'm not sure if anything recently has happened.
Did you put that on your social media, that that was happening?
Yeah.
I do not think we did. I do not think we did.
I can tell you, people are, if anything, I will always go there and say, okay, what did they post on their social media? It's just like Spectrum. If I get an outage, Spectrum's like, okay, I get a text, I get, or I can go to my account, and it's, it's right there. I said, that's the biggest thing, people just, they didn't know what was going on.
I just want to make sure I understand this, I'm going to go back through this. So you guys had a bad manager in place that didn't ask for help, you had people that were off, or for whatever reason, you had, you had a driver shortage, and your phone system changed. Now I will tell you, from personal experience, your call center has never worked well. Going back to 2001. So 21, I'm sorry. Aaron, how long is their contract?
So, just to be clear, I think it's-
In 2030, there's a, a two-year renewal.
So, so, so one of the things I'm concerned about is, there's been a plethora of things, and this, this has just culminated into this incident.
Sure.
And, you know, excuses are not excuses, is what, is the end result, the lack of end result of people getting their trash picked up, which is not acceptable. So whatever we do in the future, I hope we put in there, we have, whatever you're doing, I hope it works. But there's consequences that, you know, of dealing with you guys going forward, because I haven't been happy with you guys since we started.
The communication is severely lacking.
And so we need, we need to be a little bit more proactive, you know, until we get to 2020, 2030, determination on how we go forward.
Understood, right? We, we want to provide great service, we want, we want to be good partners, no very small sample size, but I think the service has been good the last few weeks. Again, took us a while to get our hands wrapped around the situation we're in, getting short 15 to 20 drivers, right? Not excuses, but this is, this is what we're dealing with. I think we're in a lot better place right now, and, and we're going to talk through what we're going to do to maintain that moving forward, right? So it's, can't be just, hey, we got it, we got it fixed for three or four weeks, and then we go back to something else, right? We want to be providing the outstanding service moving forward.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons why we brought outside resources. It takes about, about a month for a driver to get signed off to where he's able to drive around himself. So that's, that was some of the delay, but luckily for us, we were able to get those outside resources where drivers are experienced and they're able to read a map and actually perform.
Let me ask you a question, Governor, about the call center. Is it manned, is it staffed after hours? It seems like I called after hours and I was just told, call back during business hours.
It is not.
It is not, okay.
It is not.
This is problematic, because when do people find out that their trash has been missed?
When they get out from work.
When they go from work. And then now it's still my problem to remember to do this after, you know, the next day during business hour. So I had something happen to me, out of my control, and now I have to go through and make a schedule to call again afterwards. So I wanted to ask you guys to consider at least a voicemail box where somebody can leave a message, so.
So one remedy to that, an improvement that we made is we added a, a way to submit those requests through our website, and that automatically, Jason set it up where it automatically emails their customer service, and so we can track those as well.
But again, that's taking more of our staff time and stuff to deal with a problem that should be being dealt with by the company.
Well, it's automated.
And then we're getting our calls all night long.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I'm going to encourage you as well to think about some sort of outbound campaign. Just because the calls went down, everyone dealing with, I'm a tech and I've been dealing with call centers for a long time, sometimes calls don't go down because people just feel it's a waste of time to call. So it's not that things are getting better, it's just that they feel like it doesn't have any efficacy to call.
Okay.
So they get frustrated, they just stop. So I would just caution against using a dip in the calls as a indicator that things are getting better. Now, I was saying that, I do think things are improving, I do, but I'd like to see evidence of that, rather than just a dip in the calls. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Post on social media, I can't tell you how much-
I mean, that is, it's instantaneous, and everybody goes there first to ask, what's going on with our trash? It's all over social media.
This is a digital society now, I mean, it's just, it just is.
Who?
The other, second comment I got was that, pick up my trash and the containers clutter across the alley.
Oh, yeah.
Or in the middle of the street.
That's, that's the second biggest comment I got.
Right. Okay, we, we'll, we'll do some training with our drivers. I'm not, I'm not sure how that would happen, the arm picks it up.
I'm just saying that they have to-
I can tell you, it's for the rear little ones, that's what it is. I can tell you how it's happening, is that, my understanding is that the drivers are incented to go fast, because they get, when they get done, they get done whether it's eight hours or six hours. What happens is, because I've seen this happen, they lift it up, they'll start driving off before they put it back down again. So now it's going 60 feet away.
Yeah, always.
We have a, we have a, you know, I have a couple of people very upset, eight months pregnant, they're now going to get out of my car, I'm with a trash can, may seem small, but it's those sort of little things that make a big difference.
They can't, they can't just go back where we picked it up. Yeah, pick it up from, and just, we used to, and I'm not sure if I remember the, over the waste industry, we used to incentivize them to get done earlier.
Yeah.
Now we're all straight hourly, right? So there's no, before there was a day rate or incentive pay, and so they would finish in six hours, they got paid the full day.
I love the concept, but we have unfortunate, it sets along behaviors sometimes.
Yes, sir, and I've also addressed some of those bad behaviors as well, coming in in a month and a half, so I've addressed those and I'll continue to as well.
Thank you.
And, and Mike, Michael, he came from a very big business unit in California, used to dealing with, with big contracts. The, the culture has started to change, right? That, that takes some time, right? The gentleman there before, culture was not great, no accountability, no ownership, we're starting to get that back.
Now, gentlemen, are you referring to Jerry?
Yeah.
When you say the gentleman before-
No, the operations manager.
Oh, okay.
Jerry's on, Jerry's on vacation today, yeah.
Okay.
Jerry's still, you're pointing, me and point of conversation.
Okay.
I don't think I could do anything with her if I wanted.
No, you couldn't.
All right, so just got to take a look at data here and kind of see how, over the months, and even when Castle Hills kind of came on, where the peak of missed pickups was really at, the peak at March, right? So March, and there's a slide, on the next, excuse me, a graph on the next slide that shows you graph, graphically how, how bad it got in March, early March, right there. So the light blue line is, you know, that's Cast, or that's Louisville as a whole, right? So the traditional Louisville, and then the dark blue line on top of that is just the addition of missed pickups from Castle Hills when we got that.
These are, of course, reported missed pickups, right? You're not going to know, it's a pure-
Correct. These are reported missed pickups, you know, customer perception, going through our system, this is, this is the number of missed-
Your idea could be much more, if, if the resident didn't call it in, you're correct.
Correct. So this is what we were tracking, and as you can see, week over week, starting from March 9th, all the way down to the end of April here, you know, you're seeing a dip in improvement on number of missed pickups significantly over the course of a couple of months, right there. So, moving to the next slide, hey, what are our next steps? So we have cameras on our trucks, we want to evaluate the videos, we want to work with the city, and we've been working with Aaron and Jason to take a look at, hey, are these true misses? How are we actually verifying that we collected some, collected someone's home? On top of that, we're using those cameras primarily as driver training, right? So camera faces downwards, and it faces downwards. Driver has bad behavior, we, it alerts us, and we're training that driver on good behaviors, sustainable behaviors going forward.
All right, is that on all trucks or some trucks?
That is on all of our, all of our trucks.
Okay. I love this video, because, you know, we may have people who are used to twice a week and they're looking for a reasoning complaint.
Correct.
And if the video helps, so if there wasn't a problem, that's worth looking at as well. So I appreciate, I love that there's cameras on every truck, so.
Yep, and it has that GPS function as well, so where Michael was saying, we're using that breadcrumbs, as long as we're passing by the house, we can say, hey, with a high level of certainty, we did service that street, and then we have the video to kind of confirm that as well. Customer training, we're also making sure that our drivers are tagging and then taking pictures of those tags, right? Because we need to make sure, hey, if there's bad behaviors on the customer side as well, they understand what's going on, and that's why they're not getting serviced. And then we're verifying through fiscal means and a digital means as well. Fiscal issues, those are really, hey, where's the cart placement? You know, after a certain amount of time, same driver in that seat, they understand, hey, I got a cart on this side of the street versus in the alley, so on and so forth. So those physical issues slowly start to get kind of churned out as our drivers get familiar. And then we're having meet, weekly meetings with the city staff. And so every Monday, we've been getting with Jason and Aaron and his team, just to say, hey, this is, this is what's going on, these are number missed pickups, looking for solutions, long-term solutions, durable solutions. The last thing that we have on there is customer communication, right? If you said, we can take a way, take a look into the, the whole social media portion, right? So how is, how is that information getting out to your system?
Same perspective, you're seeing folks also, they're not doing what they need to do with the trash, that's another good educational tool that you can post as well.
Right, things, things like flyers, we can definitely put out flyers to where, hey, this is what you should be going, should be going in each can, right? So.
Yeah, we've had those. Remember the flyer situation? And they were kind of, I don't remember. The arms wrong, we got 15, we, we can't understand the flyer.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That was our flyer?
Yeah. It's like, oh.
It was when they went to the side, side door.
Yeah.
We're at the trash can.
It's just education and communication, communication goes a long way. If there's a, if there's a breakdown, sometimes you can't help a breakdown, a lot of times you can, but if you communicate to the citizens, their frustration level and hostility level may go way down if they know what's going on. But all they know is that the rates are up, their trash isn't getting picked up, their calls aren't getting answered, they can't find anything that's going on online, and so they're left to call the city, and they're, and they call us. And we don't have a contract with y'all for them to have to do all that.
Understood.
I think most people understand, a flat tire, broken down vehicle, okay, great. That's not, that's somewhat out of your control, I think.
Right.
Everybody understands that, just they would like to know about it.
Yes, sir.
The repeat misses are the ones that are hardest, right? So we have somebody call in, they're missed, you know, Jim or somebody gets on the call with them, says, oh, we got it, we got it taken care of, they get hit again, it's fine, and two weeks later the mist again. These are the things that really are difficult to overcome.
Yeah, the staffing piece, right? The consistency, having the same driver on the same route, right, every week helps with that. So as we get staffed up and trained up, right, we'll keep that same driver, and so it should lead to less of that happening, right? Because I know all the houses I'm supposed to be hitting, and then like if it's a tricky spot, that driver knows, hey, I got to go do this to get that, that container.
Okay.
And one other thing we're doing for, for durability piece, so at the area level, so where I, where I sit, we implemented, because of the situation we got here with the Louisville contract, so across the entire state, anytime there's more than one route down on the ground, ops managers required to send it to a variety of people, myself included, right? So I immediately know, okay, I have an issue in Plano, I have an issue in San Antonio, I have an issue in Louisville, right? So it's top of mind to me versus me waiting for an ops manager to get himself in a bind and all of a sudden, we're, we're in the situation we were a couple of months ago.
And then locally here, I've implemented a call at about 1:30 to where if we do have that flat tire or a breakdown, where can assistance come to be able to make sure services are fulfilled?
I do, I do want to provide some positive feedback to you guys, so I, I've gotten a couple of these emails as well, and this is a Facebook post that was brought to my attention, I sent it over to Claire and Jim and Aaron, I think. Because I know the switch from CWD to Republic has been interesting. My almost three-year-old has loved seeing the blue trucks, trash trucks drive by and constantly has to watch them. Finally got to see them come down the street, I didn't catch his name, but they have to
And then locally here, I've implemented a call at about 1:30 to where if we do have that flat tire or breakdown, where can assistance come to be able to make sure services are filled?
I do want to provide some positive feedback to you guys, so I've gotten a couple of these emails as well, and this is a Facebook post that was brought to my attention, I've sent it over to Claire and Jim and Aaron, I think. Because I know the switch from CWD to Republic has been interesting. My almost three-year-old has loved seeing the blue trash truck drive by and constantly has to watch him. Finally got to see them come down the street, I didn't catch his name, but I have to collect their big one, or bin, one of the crew members stopped truck enrollment, grabbed two coloring books, crayons, and foam mini trash trucks, gave them to my oldest. So thank you, Republic, for having such thoughtful and caring employees, it made our whole day.
That's all we want here on Facebook.
Maybe 132,000 more of those will be good.
If you have the same driver, kind of like our postman. I know our postman and his family, and so if you have the same driver, it just builds that community and rapport. And it helps on safety factor too, when they see something that's not. I like that.
Anything else? Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have about four minutes. Probably should adjourn here, if you're just not adjourned, but just go out there, I think four minutes, go back out there and I'll bring everybody back in here, and we'll do the presentation and video better. All right, all right, let's everybody out.
Thank you, thank you. All right, welcome to Louisville City Council meeting on this day, Monday, May 19th. We are going to do our invocation by Councilmember Kristen Green, our pledge of allegiance with William Councilmember Meredith, and then we need to go back over there for a presentation on budget, you're welcome to join us, it is open session, and we'll come right back in here and we will go to our first item on the agenda.
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation. Amen, thank you.
Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, we're going to go back out into this little room for a breakout session on budget, again, it's open, you guys are welcome to join us, it shouldn't take too long, just hang with us, we'll be right back to talk about Agenda Item 1, thank you. Okay, mics are on, we're continuing the workshop, this is Item C, Presentation of Fiscal Year 2025 Midyear Budget Report.
Good evening, Mayor Pluton and Council, happy to be here tonight. This is a report that we give to you every year, this is our annual midyear report, I do want to call out, this is an AI-generated image, so AI gave me the theme for tonight, so I'm sticking with it, it's the mile marker theme, and I was pleasantly surprised that I got it to spell everything right, so we're making progress there. So Councilmember Jones actually said something last meeting that really resonated with me, and it was along the lines of, just because you've heard something before doesn't mean that you're gonna remember it and talk about it again. So some of the slides that I've got in here are just sort of a recap, some of the stuff we talked about back in the budget workshop, some of this you might already know, but just in the interest of those who may be watching online or who aren't familiar, we're gonna go ahead and recap some information here. So starting out with our current fiscal year, back on October 1, 2024, that's when our fiscal year began, March 31st marked the sixth month mark of our current fiscal year, so that just happened about a month and a half ago. And now you might be asking why if this presentation is titled the Midyear Report, why we're presenting this to you on March, I'm sorry, May 19th? And that's because all throughout the month of April, our finance department is still receiving invoices for things that occurred in March, we're still receiving revenues, we're still making those credit card payments as well, so all that occurs throughout the month of April, and then we close the month of March at the end of April. One other thing that's going on around the same time is that departments have started building their fiscal year 2026 budgets. Part of that process is they go ahead and they take a look at the current year's budget, and they say, okay, here's how much we plan to receive in revenues, here's how much we plan to spend, how are we doing according to that plan? That's something that y'all don't normally see, that does typically happen around the same time here, so we want to give departments the chance to really find two nose figures, make sure we get to meet with them before we present it to you in May. So that's really where we're at right now. Moving forward into the rest of the fiscal year, we have our annual budget workshop scheduled on August 9th, that's when we'll talk mostly about the 26 proposed budget, we'll talk a little bit about how current revenues are comparing to proposed revenues as well, and then just to give you a sneak peek into the current budget process, we're actually in week nine of our budget season, so normally when we meet with y'all to have our one-on-one sets at the beginning of August, this is actually something that occurs year-round for my team and then for the departments, it takes about half a year, so we are knee-deep in budget season right now. So just a recap of your fiscal year 2025 operating budget, these are major funds that we typically talk about in this report, we actually have 30 overall operating funds in the budget. What you see here is the adopted operating budget, so when we talk about the operating budget, we're talking about really those ongoing expenditures, not so much those one-time requests. So our general fund is our largest fund, it usually takes up about half of our operating budget, this year's adopted operating budget was 137.3 million. We're gonna talk a little bit about our hotel motel tax fund at 2.6 million, our grants fund, which was budgeted at 5 million, one thing I want to mention on our grants fund is that normally we'll adopt a budget for the grants that we anticipate receiving that year. If we have any grants that cross multiple fiscal years, for example, CDVG, typically we'll spend that grant money over a series of years, we manually will roll over those grant funds as well, so typically what you end up seeing is an adjusted budget in the current year that's higher than the adopted budget. And then we're gonna talk about our crime control and our fire control funds, those are both, two of our sales tax funds, we'll talk about our water and sewer fund, you're gonna hear me refer to that as our utility fund, and then we'll talk a little bit about our drainage fund and our 4B fund, which is our final sales tax dedicated fund. So let's talk a little bit about revenue trends, we're gonna start out in the general fund. If you recall back to our August workshop, one chart that we always show you every year is a pie chart, and it shows you the breakout of property tax, sales tax, and our other revenues, and usually we use that chart to make the point, property tax and sales tax are two of our biggest revenue sources, but also in any given year, we have, you know, 25, 30% of our revenues coming from other revenue sources as well. So these are the same three categories that you see here, and this just shows how we are performing this year. So starting with property tax, what you see on the charts here, and I know on that screen it looks blue, but really the dark green bar on the far left, that is the adopted budget for this revenue source, the lighter green bar in the middle, that is our revised year-end estimate, so that's how we think we're going to end the year, and then the lightest green bar on the far right, that's our year-to-date actuals or our collections to date. So a couple of things I want to point out here on property tax, what you might see is that our collections are at 58.9 million, but we're showing at the end of the year, we're gonna end at about 58.4 million. The reason for that, we'll go into a little more detail here in a bit, is because of what are called recalculation refunds by the Central Appraisal District, this is something that has changed in the last couple of years, these refunds have become more automatic, while normally we receive the majority of our property tax at the beginning of the year, those refunds occur throughout the year, so that's why we expect to see our year-end estimates a little bit lower than our current collections.
I have a quick question, the year-to-date, that's through March?
That is, that's actually.
That's through now?
Yeah, so that includes all revenues we've received to date, so the month of March is closed out on the finance side, but we're trying to include the most up-to-date information that we have available to you for these figures. And speaking of that, so when we talk about sales tax, you might see this year-to-date figure, you know, at 21 million, and you might think, well, we're in May, why is this so low? The reason for that is that sales tax collections are always two months behind, so our May collections are, or actually actually occurred in March, so we always receive that at two months in arrears. And the reason that we're keeping this year's midyear estimate flat compared to the adopted budget is because we've had a lot of variation this year with our audit collection, so typically this is what happens when the Texas Controller's Office will review a business, they will perform what's called a corrective action case, and then depending on that outcome, they will change our collections, sometimes it's in our favor, sometimes it's not, our May collection, we saw a pretty big decrease there, and so we just want to be extra conservative here, and so that's the reason that we're leaving that midyear estimate flat. And then moving into our other revenues, this is things like your permits, your fees, charges for services, basically any other general fund revenue that is not property tax or sales tax. And we are expecting to end the year at 38 million there, which is higher than what we budgeted at 34.9. Then, just to go into a little more detail on some of those other revenues, these are all revenues where we're seeing those sources increase compared to what we budgeted. So on the building permit side, we talked to you a little bit about this at retreat, we are expecting to come in above budget for a building permit, so we're doing great there, we had a few large projects that got permitted a little bit sooner than we had anticipated, and then in some cases, we had additional buildings get permitted as well. So we're doing great on the building permit side. Franchise taxes have kind of grouped all of these together, there's a bunch of individual entities that you see here, but really, the main reason that we're projecting this $568,000 increase is because of Cozer, so they had a rate structure change back in November of 2024 that is impacting the revenues that we see now and throughout fiscal year 2025, and we just receive a certain percentage of their gross revenues. Landfill host fees, this is another one that we grouped together, so this is Waste Management, Allied Republic, and then the Farmers Branch location, and really the reason that we're seeing this increase here is because of a one-time spike in Waste Management host fees related to some contaminated soil that's being brought to the landfill, so we see that one-time revenue increase, we don't expect that trend's gonna continue in future fiscal years. And then lastly, we have our park development, parkland dedication, and tree mitigation fees, you're gonna hear me talk a little bit more about this later on in this presentation, but these revenues are based on projects that have been paid to date, and then also projects that our Parks and Recreation team is aware of that will occur for the rest of this fiscal year, we're gonna talk a little bit about that, but those revenues go directly to those projects that support these programs. And then talking about general fund revenues that we are projecting as flat or decreasing, talked a little bit about sales tax, so I just wanted to call that out here, that we are projecting that to remain flat just in the interest of being conservative. Then we've talked a little bit about property taxes, and in particular, I've listed the specific category of property taxes here, so normally we have our general property tax collections, we've got our penalty and interest fees, and then we have delinquencies as well, so this is the category where we're seeing that current decrease based on those recalculation refunds. And then lastly, we're also seeing a slight dip in our warrant and other court fees, this is due to traffic citations that have decreased compared to the prior year, that impacts the cases that go to the municipal court, so we tend to see a delayed impact to our warrant and other court fees as well.
I have a quick question about that one. The, one of the, probably everybody here, what bends my ear the most is, people were all my stop signs, move at speed in my neighborhood, so there seems to be a plethora of opportunity to write citations, is this reflective of staffing, of a different philosophy for where we spend our time and resources? Is it what it is?
No, not narrowly, our citation counts have actually been relatively stable or slightly above average, and the officers spend a considerable amount of time dealing with intersection enforcement at this current point to deal with it, there is quite a bit, though it is a cultural issue, I think, for the whole driving world right now.
So that personal line traffic citations have dropped?
That is in comparison to last year, we saw a significant spike last year, but Chief Collins' statement is correct, just on average, we're trending where we normally are.
Okay, so the spike compared to last year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think inflation and people needing to just pay their mortgage and electricity, this is gone. It's on the shelf, they just haven't got to yet.
Okay, moving on to the hotel motel fund, we really just have two sources of revenue here, it's the hotel occupancy tax, that's the big one, we also have a portion of interest earnings, our hotel occupancy tax revenues are trending right on budget, we expect to end the year at about 2.7 million, you can see our year-to-date collections right there, 1.3 million. And then interest earnings across the board, we have interest earnings in all of our funds, we do budget this very conservatively, we pay attention to federal interest rate cuts or any impacts there as well, we are actually seeing that we're gonna come in above budget and the majority of our interest earnings across the funds. One thing I wanted to mention here, out of these year-to-date collections, just under 58,000 is due to short terminals that are now permitting that tax to us. Then I've grouped together our crime control, fire control, and 4B funds, so these are all of our sales tax dedicated funds, the reason that we grouped them together is because we do those trends the same way that we do on the general fund side, so because we're seeing that fluctuation in our audit collections, we're holding these revenue estimates flat as well throughout the rest of the year. Moving on to our utility fund, the three main revenue sources in this fund are our water sales, our sewer service, and then our capital recovery fees, which are also known as impact fees. So when we look at water sales, we are going to end the year above budget, which is great, this is typically a trend that we see in the utility fund. I do want to remind Council that you approved rate increase on October 1st, that helps us fund those capital infrastructure projects and also our utility operations, but also, this revenue source is development-dependent as well, so as we continue to bring in new development, we'll see increases in this revenue, and then also, it is heavily weather-dependent, so last year we had a very rainy season, this year we've had some rain, not to the extent of last year, fingers crossed, but provided that we return to a normalized year, we're gonna end the year just behind the utility fund. On sewer service, we are expecting a small decrease in revenues there, dropping from essentially nine, I'm sorry, 19 million to 18.5, and the reason for that is, we're seeing our monthly revenues for sewer service remain the same, but really what this is, is a utility billing approval to correct a prior year entry, so overall, across the board in the utility fund, we're in great shape. And then lastly, our water and sewer capital recovery fees, we're expecting to end the year at about 1.8 million. Moving on to the drainage fund, somewhat of a similar pattern here, although not to the same extent of variation in the utility fund, so Council did approve a rate increase, this was the third year in a three-year plan for the drainage fund, it is something that we will be reevaluating in FY 2026 for future years as well, but anytime that we have new development here, we tend to see this revenue source increase as well. And then again, you see those interest earnings coming in much higher than we've budgeted there. So moving on to expenditures, this is not a chart that I normally show you in the midyear report, but again, I just wanted to recall your mind back to some of those discussions that we had back in August, so what you see here is the general fund operating budget for all of our departments. We have 19 departments, 17 of those are staffed, and a couple of things that I wanted to draw your attention to here is, normally I would put labels on a chart like this, when I did that here, cluttered it up and it actually changed the story that I was trying to tell y'all, and so what I want you to notice is that when we look at police and fires, our public safety, that makes up about 49% of our general fund budget, and then when we add in public services, that's about 66% of our general fund budget. And I call that out because I just want to remind Council the dedication that you've given to our public safety and our infrastructure as well. So when we look at public services, you see the adopted budget in dark green, you see the year-to-date expenditures in light green, it looks like we've mostly spent public services budget in the general fund, well, in reality, 13 of that 19 million was a transfer to street maintenance, street CIP, so that was something that we know was on Council's radar last year, so that's why you see those expenditures in the general fund so high there. And then one other thing I wanted to call out was on non-departmental, which is towards the end of the chart here, that light green bar is higher than the dark green bar, the reason for that is throughout the course of the year, in fact, back in March, Council approved a supplemental appropriation to help fully fund our new retirement program, so there was an amendment to the budget that you're not seeing reflected here, so we will come in under the amended budget, I just wanted to call that out. And then one other thing that we like to do is just provide Council with an update of any departmental budget allocations that we've shifted around, so all of these are staying within their original funds, we're just shifting that allocation around. So on the general fund side, we had a midyear reorganization back in February of ITS, City Secretary's Office, and City Manager's Office staff, I do believe that Council was briefed on those changes prior to them occurring. And then we also moved some public safety funding that was set aside in our non-departmental budget over to the police department, once we found out that they received a grant, so the grant that they received covered part of three police officer salaries, the city's also responsible for benefits and other ongoing expenses as well, so once we found out that they got that grant, we moved that budget over to their department. Then moving into the grants fund, we unfortunately did not receive the safer firefighter grant that we applied for through FEMA, but with those budgeted funds, what we were able to do is go ahead and fund grants that the city did receive that we had not anticipated, so for example, the justice assistance grant that was brought to Council back in December, that first aid kits, ITS received a cybersecurity grant, and then NIS actually just got notice that they received an ICMA Economic Mobility and Opportunity Grant, and that's the image that you see here, and I wanted to point this one out because I think only 15 entities were selected, so it was pretty rare that we got this opportunity, and we're really looking forward to seeing all the plans that come out of this. And then moving into the final portion of today's presentation, this is what is on your agenda for later tonight on consent for your midyear supplementals, we like to just give you a quick description of the supplementals that we're asking for here, starting with the general fund, we're asking for 598,000, the large majority of that is those park development, parkland dedication, and tree mitigation fees that we talked about earlier. So because we're bringing in all of that revenue, we want to go ahead and move it out to the projects so that we can spend it, right? So we can do more tree plantings, things like that, so we have access to those dollars to spend sooner rather than later. Then a small portion of it is for the upcoming runoff election that will be held on June 7th, and then the remaining 91,000 is for asbestos testing and demolition of the recently acquired Mill Street property that's at the corner of High School, Healy, and Mill Street, we are aware that one of Council's strategic focus areas is beautification efforts, so we just want to make sure that we go ahead and get this kicked off, this will take some time to clean up.
Just to remind you, because I think I got a question from one of you, that's the property where we have the future entry sign coming into Louisville, but of course we're also now the proud owner of that old building and need to take care of that.
Then moving on to the debt service fund, we're asking for 1.9 million here, I wanted to spend some time and tell you exactly what is going on here, so. So normally, throughout the year, we will do the city's GO and utility revenue bond issuance at the same time every year. Usually it's around late spring, early summer. In fact, you have two items on tonight's agenda, talking about the current year's bond issuance. What we're talking about here is really for last year's bond issuance. So when we make our debt payments, we do it a year in arrears. So when we sold last year's bonds, we actually had to wait for the outcome of the May election for those four bond propositions. So by the time that we sold those bonds, we had already presented the FY 2025 budget to you. Because we don't start making those payments until the following fiscal year, this would be the fiscal year when we would need that money to start making those debt payments. And I'll mention that again here on the utility fund side. Then in the hotel motel tax fund, we're asking for 29,000. Council heard a presentation previous this year, back in February, related to the options for the red, white and Lewisville show. So council decided to give us the direction to go with the hybrid fireworks syndrome show. So this is a supplemental for those funds. Then on the utility fund side, again, this is the same issue that we are seeing in the debt service fund. Because we do our general obligation bonds out of the debt service fund and our utility revenue bonds out of the utility fund, we will also have a supplemental on the utility fund side to make those payments. And then lastly, TERS 3, we're asking for $74,000 here. Part of this is to increase the funds available for the city's consultant P3 Works in order to review the increased amount of draw requests we're seeing for the Castle Hills area development out there. And then the rest of it is to increase the current year reimbursement for the developer. So we have an overall economic development agreement. I just want to make it clear, this is not increasing their overall payment. This is just allowing us to pay that agreement down quicker. And the TERS 3 board did approve this request earlier this month. And that is all that I have for you tonight. Again, all of these supplementals are on your agenda tonight for consideration. Are there any questions?
For a job. Yep, thank you.
All right, welcome back. So I am not TJ Gilmore, I'm not Mayor Gilmore. I am Mayor Pro Tem Patrick Kelly. So bear with me as I try to fill some big shoes. I have some great people up here who'll help me when I misstep. And we're going to be efficient and we're going to make sure everybody gets heard today. We'll move on to item C1, public hearing. Continue public hearing with consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 0428-22-ZON to amend the planned development concept plan set forth in Exhibit 5B, the realm sub-district concept plan thereto for 3.459 acres located south of the intersection of Essex Boulevard and Parker Road, FM 544. Legally described as Castle Hills H3 Lot 2 Block A, as requested by McAdams on behalf of Breckholdt Land's CHLC, the property owner case number 2404-2PZ. Administrative comments? Leave those now.
Fantastic, okay. Richard Lukey is here with the presentation. Richard, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This presentation will cover quite a bit of information. The case before you is very complex, there's a lot of moving parts. So we'd like to take this opportunity to try to walk you through all of this so that everyone will have a little bit clearer understanding. First, I'm going to start with significant historical events concerning Castle Hills. It all started in 1996, when the original Castle Hills Agreement was approved. And in that agreement, base zoning designations were established. I do want to emphasize the word designation. They were not zoning districts because that area was not in the city limits. So all the development was controlled by this master agreement. And there was a pretty good number of different zoning designations that were approved that were enabled to be used in Castle Hills. And one of those was the General Business 2 zoning designation. And as Castle Hills started developing, the way that worked, those zoning designations were assigned at the time of the final plat for the individual sites. And that, those assignments were made in alignment with the limitations on the various land uses that were established for Castle Hills. So again, that was kind of the foundation for all of the development that has occurred and continues to occur in Castle Hills. The next significant milestone was in May of '14. That's when the realm was created. The boundaries were established. Quite a few technical details were approved by the city council at that time to regulate the development within those boundaries. But one of the most significant one is the fact that the list of permitted uses with that zoning designation was changed. And that allowed mixed-use development in all the commercial designations within the realm. And those, the mixed use would allow unlimited multifamily units above ground-floor commercial uses that were already allowed in the realm. The next significant date was November 15th of 2021, when Castle Hills was formally annexed and brought into the city of Lewisville. Caveat to that, the state law required that the city adopt permanent zoning within 60 days of annexation. So the city staff was working very diligently to put that zoning package together. That zoning package was approved, and that was a planned development zoning package. It was approved on January 3rd of '22. It established three sub-districts and all of the base districts for all of the properties within the boundaries of the annexed area were established at that time. So now I'm going to drill down one more layer down to the PD. The whole purpose of that PD was to reflect the original development regulations and the land use limitations that were established in that 1996 agreement. And that 1996 agreement was really designed for eventual annexation so that what was established in 1996 could be converted into a planned development that has resulted in what Castle Hills is today. Mentioned those three sub-districts. There's Castle Hills Primary, that is really everything outside of the realm and Crown Center. Includes all the single-family residential, all of the townhome areas, the early garden-style multifamily development along Windhaven, and of course, all of the developments adjacent to the golf course. Again, the realm is a special district that contained all those regulations that were adopted in 2014. And then again, Crown Center has another set of very unique regulations to really create an urban mixed-use environment. And that area is located on the west side of the Sam Rayburn Tollway. Those regulations were adopted in 2020, right ahead of the annexation. And I think it's important to note that the base zoning districts for all the properties within Castle Hills reflect the regulations that were adopted in 1996. Now, those 1996 base zoning districts weren't just carbon copied from the zoning districts that were in the city. They had some modifications done. It was a negotiation between the city and the developer at that time and memorialized in that original 1996 agreement. Okay, now we're going to drill down one more level, down to the realm. The important thing to remember about the realm is that our zoning ordinance at the time of creation of the PD required, mandated that there be a concept plan attached. So there is a concept plan attached, but it really only addresses two elements. It only addresses the building footprint locations and site circulation. That is it, period. All of the other traditional land use regulations, such as height, land use, setbacks and so forth, are already covered in the base zoning districts that go all the way back to 1996 and amended in 2014. So the concept plan amendments, there was a process established because we knew that there was still quite a bit of land left in the realm to be developed. So we had to have a process for making those changes, because things do change over time. So there was a minor modification process and a major modification process. Minor modification is described as any type of changes to the location of buildings, changes to the size of building footprints and minor changes to the site circulation pattern that do not impact the site or surrounding development. Those can be approved by the planning director. Major modifications include the addition or removal of buildings and changes to the site circulation pattern that impacts connectivity within the site and to surrounding development. And again, that, those type of changes are considered major and they can only be amended through the rezoning process set forth in the Unified Development Code, which includes two public hearings, one before the Planning and Zoning Commission and one before the city council. That also kicks in a notification process. And I will bring up a map and explain that here a little bit further on the next slide. I do want to explain that to address those blank areas where there was really uncertainty as to what would develop on those sites. Those concept plans for those blank areas can be approved by the planning director as long as it aligns with all the other requirements set forth in the sub-district and in the overall PD. So this is the boundaries of the realm. Now, there's two sub-areas. You can see the red one along the north is north of Windhaven Parkway. That is SubArea 1, and then SubArea 2 is the blue. We established two separate sub-areas primarily for amendments, either amendments to the base zoning, which still go through a rezoning process, or for concept plan amendments, which, again, you have to break it down to either major or minor. Major ones will have to go through the rezoning process, minor can be approved by staff. And as you can see, this map illustrates the 2014 boundaries established for the realm. The southern boundary being the Kansas City Southern Railroad at the time, and it's now the Canadian Pacific Kansas City Southern Railroad. This next slide shows the base zoning district. So it's really the base zoning districts that regulate the use, the setbacks and the height. And I can kind of outline the, really the bright red is the General Business 2 base zoning district. So primarily along the Sam Rayburn Tollway. But then we have these areas along FM 544 Parker Road. It's common for major transportation arteries to have general business zoning. The really dark brown area is the multifamily 3, and that's where you see a lot of the higher concentration of multifamily development occurring in Castle Hills. Kind of the darker red are townhome. And then the kind of almost purple color is the estate townhome base zoning district. So you see there's kind of a mixture of different zoning districts within the realm. So now I want to drill down one more layer to the General Business 2 base zoning districts. And again, this base zoning district has zero front, side or rear yard setbacks. The height is a little complex. It's primarily unlimited height, only regulated to any limitations from the Federal Aviation Administration due to the proximity of area airports. But then there's some caveats were built in. One of those states that if a lot is adjacent to a residential district, no building shall exceed 45 feet in height. But there's an exception. You can gain two feet of additional height for each one foot of additional setback that you add. There's actually another caveat, and it's that last sentence. It says, "In no event, however, shall the portion of a building located within 150 feet of any property zone for residential purposes exceed the height of that residential district." So there's several layers of protection built in, depending on the characteristics of each individual site. I've listed a multitude of uses, and these are the permitted uses. There is a very, a further list of uses that are only allowed by special use permit. I did not include those. But these are the permitted uses, primarily office, retail, restaurant and that sort of thing, entertainment-type uses. But I do want to call your attention to the last one. Again, that's where that use, that was approved by the city council in 2014 when the realm was created. Dwelling units of 700 square feet, a minimum size, when located over retail, restaurant or similar use on the first floor. This next slide shows kind of a comparison of the base General Business 2 district in the Castle Hills PD compared to the General Business 2 district in our current Unified Development Code. You could see in both situations, it's a zero front, side and rear yard setback. The heights, though, is where you're starting to see some differentiation there. And again, the Unified Development Code is the straight zoning district that has been in existence, but it has been modified over time since 1996, where 1996 was pretty much frozen in time and carried on throughout the development of Castle Hills. And then, again, the Unified Development Code itself was adopted in December 1st of 2022. And that was a major overhaul of really all of our development regulations that apply citywide. But the primary difference here is in Castle Hills, you've got, the first caveat is unlimited height. But then you've got the caveat of the 45 feet. And then the second caveat of limitations when you're within 150 feet of residentially zoned property. The General Business 2 and the UDC has those same requirements, but not that last one. So that's kind of the differences between those two categories of General Business 2. On the football track, now again, now we've drilled down to the actual site. The original concept plan that was adopted with the PD in January of '22 illustrated eight lots running a small circular entrance and backing to the railroad. We did just discover with this application that no buildings were illustrated. When this case originally appeared, was submitted to the city, it appeared that there were some small buildings. But it was a very large drawing of a very large area. And as you zoomed in, it was just, it was almost unreadable. With this submittal, it was a little bit more clear. The version that was submitted, we could see that those were lot numbers. The proposed amendment illustrates one single building of approximately 14,000 square feet. And that building was moved closer to Parker Road with site circulation going around the building. And the next slide will show how that circulation has changed. Site circulation change is considered a major modification to the concept plan and requires approval through the zoning and the public hearing process. Also want to add that an 80-foot to 120-foot wide electric utility easement identified on the final plat, approved in June 22, further constrained the building location options on the site. And again, we have an illustration that shows that. And I do want to note that the final, original final plat was approved by P&amp;Z in June of '22, was replanted in April of 2023. And with that original plat, the associated infrastructure, particularly water and sewer, was engineered and approved by staff and it was sized to serve a potential mixed-use development on the site. And again, I guess this is the most important thing to reiterate, is that the uses within the proposed building and the height of the proposed building are not elements under consideration with this proposed concept plan amendment. Again, those items are not on the table. And I think this illustration kind of says it all. This is what is on the table, what is shown in blue. On the left, you have the current concept plan. And on the right, you have the proposed concept plan. So that's really the change that is before you tonight. The site circulation is shown in blue on both of these illustrations. And again, I mentioned that the electric easement that is on the site, as you can see, it occupies almost a third of that southwestern portion of the site. The property boundary is shown in red. And what is in yellow is the electric easement. So you can see there's, the presence of that easement really dictates how the site can be developed and where buildings can be located. Finally, I do want to show some images that staff went out earlier last week and used a drone to just take some still shots. And this shot here is facing north, above the proposed building footprint at an elevation of about 47.5 feet above the current grade. Now, we understand that the site will have to be regraded and will most likely drop anywhere from 10 to 15 feet. But again, 47.5 feet was chosen because that will be about the height of where the windows on the top floor will be located. So this would be the view from the, potentially from the building, or slightly lower, looking north. This next view is- This next view is looking to the south, and this is the railroad track going across at kind of a, at an angle, and that bridge is where the railroad tracks cross over Indian Creek and all of the treat areas, the associated floodway associated with Indian Creek. And then this final view is at really the same point, looking to the southwest to the nearest residential development. And I do want to go back to the boundary of the realm just to explain the public hearing notification requirement. The way the PD was written, and the reason it was divided into two subdistricts was to break up the overall for any future base zoning district changes or concept plan amendment changes. But it does require, for instance, for the southern subarea that's shown here in blue, a public hearing notice would have to be sent to all property owners within the blue and 200 feet around it. So in this case, that was right at 600 property owners that the city had to notice. So we do send a letter out to each of all 600 property owners 10 days before the Planning and Zoning Commission public meeting. And there were a lot of questions asked, you know, as to why residents in the reserve did not receive notices, and really, we count on our maps to calculate that 200-foot buffer. And when you go along the north boundary of the railroad tracks, really only one home fell within that 200 feet, and that is the one, the easternmost home on that cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac itself was also within that buffer, and that, and the streets are, they're not public streets within the reserve, they are private streets owned by the Reserve HOA. So a letter did go to the Reserve HOA as far as the public hearing notice. So with that, I'll conclude my comments, but I would be glad to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Counsel, any questions for Richard Lukey?
And if there are no questions, the applicant's representative has a presentation to follow as well.
I actually have just a few. Richard, if you'll indulge me here. So we talked about the reserve in the notification. My understanding is a letter was sent to the HOA, is that correct? Do you have the address that it was sent to?
I don't have it on me right now, but I did look it up and...
But it was sent to you.
It was sent, yes. I did confirm that today.
And then for clarification, this is two lots, really. One is in a floodplain that is mostly undevelopable, and then one is the one we're talking about now. Even though the original submittal looked like eight, there's really two plots, two lots.
It's actually one lot that's the subject of this concept plan change. The other lot is mostly floodplain with a small area that's developable on the far eastern end, and that's not the subject of this concept plan amendment.
And there's talk in the notes about a traffic signal cost. My understanding is that has been agreed, at least in principle, to be borne by the developer?
Yes. The applicant has agreed to bear the cost of that traffic signal.
And we have ways to make sure that happens?
Yes. It is documented on the ordinance, so that way it would be enforceable with the next phase of development, which is the engineering site plan process.
All right. That's everything from me. City Manager Powell, do you have anything?
Yes, Mayor Potem. After looking at this and hearing, I think we've received several comments from the residents, and I know that everyone would love to tie this up tonight. My, although our recommendation is still to support this, I feel like there, to allow staff some opportunity to tighten up some of the language with relation to that traffic signal, staff to be able to fully vet that warrant study, and, you know, see if we can work with the developer to tie down that height limit and other things as conditions on the concept plan, I think would be beneficial. So my recommendation would actually, I'm now recommending that we continue the public hearing to the June 2 City Council meeting. I think this is a good opportunity for people still to give their positions, and obviously to hear from the developer themselves, but generally speaking, I feel like I've, personally, I've heard some of the concerns, and I think we can address, at least tying down some of the things a little bit better.
So with that in mind, certainly, everybody, we'd love to hear from you. I've got a stack of cards here.
The applicant does have a presentation.
I'll get to that. I just want to say, so you're welcome to speak. You're welcome to hold. It's up to you, but we do have the presentation from the developer, correct?
Yes, and it'll be Marissa Brewer. The agenda actually says Josh Barton, so I did want to offer that correction.
Okay. And I would love to see that presentation too, if you'll indulge us. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Marissa Brewer. I'm at 4400 State Highway 121, Lewisville, Texas. Thank you, Richard. A lot of what I'm going to talk on has basically been covered by Richard, but I just want to go a little bit deeper into the presentation. So first, I'm going to recap a little bit of the history. The alignment of FM 544 was originally this. At the time, they were looking for right-of-way dedication. TechStar was looking at right-of-way dedication, and so that's when they had approached Bright Realty in order to get that dedication from them. So they, Bright Realty gave about 17.02 acres within that right-of-way dedication, and then through some agreements, TechStar realized that they did not need all of that dedication, which gave back about two acres, which gave us the site today. As Richard had mentioned, at the time of annexation, there was a 60-day process that the PD had to be created and had to have a concept plan tied to the PD. Unlike normal PDs that we see a lot of times, the concept plans are very detailed and they are attached to that PD. In this case, I think there was a conversation about how some of them could be detailed and some of them were arbitrary, which is kind of what this lot looked like at the time. So Richard had mentioned about the two lots, the right lot being just mainly floodplain, and then the left lot being replatted. So with that replat, during that process, they have increased infrastructure. So during that time, the infrastructure improvements were placed in order to contain a mixed-use product. So at that time, that was the intent of what this site could hold. So this is now obviously the new alignment, and then this is the proposed development based off of that. As Richard had mentioned, back in 1996, the zoning distinction was established and is still that same zoning district through the process. So just to reiterate, we are not asking for a rezoning. This is going to stay GB2, like it has intended to be GB2 from the beginning. We are just looking at the major modification within the site circulation. So when we went to P&amp;Z, we heard from the residents about the following elements, so I wanted to dive a little bit deeper just to kind of add some clarification to those discussions. So the notice requirements, Richard had talked a little bit about it. We did put out signs per the city ordinance. Those are required, and then we also sent out meeting, neighborhood meeting notifications by this list that the city had provided, and then that just shows that 200-foot buffer from the property and what that would look like. So those are the zoning signs, and then that buffer a little bit more zoomed in. So touching on the zoning again, this zoning is coming before you, not because we are asking for a rezoning, but because we are making a modification, a major modification in the site circulation. So within that, we are still following the permitted uses that GB2 allows. We are not proposing any new use, and one of those uses that is allowed is the ground floor retail with multifamily on top. So even if this site was to be, stay the same, those elements that are permitted are still allowed to be within that existing concept plan that was being shown. So we're staying with what is permitted and what is allowed currently. And then touching on this a little bit, so when this was designed, you know, you didn't have the encore easements that stretch the backside, thinking about kind of the circulation, fire, how are they going to access these buildings and things like that? So creating a more refined plan, which is kind of what we're proposing today, looking at those elements with those easements, but then also looking at the safety that fire needs in order to access all parts of the building, and then also creating that setback that we have established. So diving into the site conditions, we are about 350 feet away from a residential home to the top of a glass building. So that creates that separation, which we have obviously no height requirement per the FAA. There's very limited height requirements here because we are not adjacent to a single-family district, and we're not next to a single-family district. So this is just some images that are shown from that height. And then talking about how is this cohesive with the existing land use? So these are a couple of examples of what is currently existing in Castle Hills and what has been approved through not only this council but others, just touching on what this looks like. So you have your distances, 70, 140, 120, but you're seeing not only in our plan where you have that separation from a building to the street to another side yard. Here, you see the same thing. You see a house, you see a road, you see a multifamily building. So very cohesive with what is already existing within Castle Hills, and some of these distances are actually a lot less than what we are proposing. So we are providing, like I said, about a 350-foot distance, with some of these distances being a lot less than what has done before. And then talking on the traffic concerns, so back in August of 2024, McAdams had prepared a TIA for this specific site. It had never been submitted to the city. However, it was conducted, and that is where we have established that this site needed a signal, and that is what we are working on today. We're updating the TI, overall TIA for the overall realm, and so that would also show that this site needs that traffic signal. So that's the note that was put on the plans in order to confirm that that would be done at the time, and then through site submittals and things like that, it would also help refine that signal needs to be put there. So just addressing some of the concerns and walking through, how is this cohesive with the land use? The zoning had been initiated back in 1996, and we're sticking with the same zoning. We're not changing it. Provide certainty. We are sitting there now on this concept plan that we are submitting. It has established height, it has the max number of building setbacks that you need, all those things that the original concept does not provide. So at this time, that original concept is very uncertain, and you could do anything that's permitted within that GB2 zoning code. The increased setbacks, improve traffic by adding that traffic signal, and then compatible, we've seen it through Castle Hills, it is very compatible with the existing land use, and then the constraints of the property with the right-of-way dedication happening, and then also just the easements for encore power lines. It creates a very tough piece of property, and we believe that this would be the best use for this area that also follows all the existing land use, but also what was intended at the beginning. So with that, I have concluded my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Eric Stanley is also here, and he can also help answer any questions y'all may have.
Counsel, any questions? I have just a couple of physical questions from counsel. So can you go back to slide 25, I think it was? So I have trust issues. I see notes, "Property owner shall be responsible for installation," doesn't say fiscally responsible, it's responsible, which means you could fulfill this obligation by finding a way to make the city pay for it. Is that accurate? Or do we have a way to make sure this is financial responsibility, not just responsible for getting it done? Richard, that's a question for anybody to answer.
Okay, here we go. By virtue of this note being on here, then that carries over, then, like I said, to the next phase of development, which is the engineering site plan. So that becomes the rule that has to be carried out on the engineering site plan. So the commitment is made here, it'll be attached to the ordinance and part of the overall PD. So that becomes a zoning regulation and is enforceable by staff as the developer goes through the development process.
Including fiscal accountability? Not just making sure it gets done, but paying for it as well, is that correct?
We can massage that language to be a little bit more clear.
Thank you. And then I had one more item on here, and Richard, I may need you to land this as well. Because you and I had a discussion about G2 and G2, right? And this is, you said, no, these are different zones. So we had our, what is it, G2 zoning for everywhere but the realm, pretty much, and then the realm. And this is an artifact of trying to get some deals done earlier on in the process. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And traditionally, G2 in the rest of Lewisville does not include the ability to put in apartments?
Correct.
Correct, okay. But that's why it's allowed here, because this is a separate...
It's customized for the realm.
It's grandfathered in for the realm. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions? City Manager, Paul?
No, I'm good. Considering that we have a recommendation to put this to the next, carry this over to the next meeting, and I have been like in Castle Hills mode all day. I don't know if I've talked to any of you out there, but there's been a lot of conversation. But I think it would behoove everyone to get into the city website when it comes to our agendas. CityofLewisville.com, go to City Hall tab, hit Agendas tab, ba-boom. There it is, with the date of the City Hall meeting. Anything in blue you can click on, you get every bit of this, every bit of it. It cuts out misinformation, it helps to understand, and if there's anything in there that you have questions over, call. We are so easy to get ahold of, any of us, or Richard, or our city manager loves to talk to y'all. But just to say that, every little bitty memo and all the backup that you're seeing here today is in that, and that saves some misunderstanding when we're getting a lot of information regarding one item on this lot. However, that's already been done and we can't act on that, we have to act on what's before us legally. So in two weeks, we're having another meeting, and on a Friday before that meeting, all of the stuff is going to be online. So the Friday before the meeting, it is posted. I implore you to pull it up and to look at what's going on. Every bit of it will be on there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cade. Any other comments before we go into opening, open the public hearing? All right, public hearing is now open. I'm going to read some, there is a lot up here, guys, so I'm going to try to be organized here. Thank you, thank you, City Secretary for helping organize this. So we have, I'm going to start off with reading ecomments. So we received a handful. I'm going to read these in entirety as submitted. So we have Michelle Nelson, ecomment, "No five-story building in this location." We have from Julie Lewis, "We live in the last house on the east end of Hundred Nights Drive in the reserve. Never do we imagine that living on an exclusive golf course in a quiet and private area of the neighborhood, we walk out to the front door to a five-story apartment building towering over our home. Doesn't make sense and it's disappointing that the residents aren't considered at all. We strongly oppose this building." From Joyce Landry, "I am opposed to a five-story apartment building that I would stare after my front porch. In the 14 years I have lived, I've been living in this address in Castle's community, I was never aware of anyone planning a five-story building in this location. Single-level retail is understandable." From Thomas Roche, "The proposed five-story building is completely out of place in this location and is in close proximity to existing homes. The plan was developed well after homes were constructed. Developers made no attempt to meet with residents impacted south of Parker Road to hear our concerns. The described meeting invitation was never received by any residents of the impacted reserve community." Melanie Black, "We are totally opposed to a multi-story building in this location. It not only decreases the property value of the reserve, it will be just past the overpass and dangerously impact the traffic flow. Pulling out of a parking lot at that location will be a blind spot, and we do not think adding traffic light is a good solution." Kevin Cordner, "I oppose this due to the fact that, one, the project is too close to the 100-year floodplain listed on the proposed drawing. Two, there's insufficient room for any..." Two, there's insufficient room for any type of retention area to stop contamination to Indian Creek. Three, and has anyone checked into the possible violations of the National Wetlands Act? I also believe that the runoff in the area will create ecological catastrophe on the surrounding areas. Then William Priest, why would any developer want to build a huge multi-story apartment complex just a few feet from an active railroad track that generates tremendous amount of noise? There are several scheduled freight trains that run daily right in front of the proposed apartments. The original plan to build small retail stores off of services used by the residents from the area of homes was an ideal plan. The area in question has also suffered several major soil movements, not to mention, not mentioned in the plans. That is it for ecomments. See, we're going to read the cards from the people who did not wish to speak. There is a lot of them, just bear with me. So these are folks who did not wish to speak but have registered a, a, either support or opposition. So I'm just going to read the name and whether in support or opposition. You have Charles Hummer, opposition. Pamela Johnson, opposition. Britt Dockery, opposition. Catherine Dockery, opposition. James Radcliffe, opposition. Patty Radcliffe, opposition. Rahul Kay, opposition. John Plohensky, and I apologize if I messed that name up, in support. Thomas Brand in opposition. A.R. Porter in opposition. Lawrence McGuire, opposition. Michael Eichenlum, opposition. Georgia Brand, opposition. Beverly Porter, opposition. Julie Lewis, opposition. Austin Lewis, opposition. Renee Lawson, opposition. Suzanne Dunn, opposition. Lisa Resnick, opposition. Gary Vanestel, opposition. James Mahalik, opposition. Joyce Landry, opposition. Mary Pryor, opposition. Karen Hahn, opposition. Glenn Larson, opposition. Sue Larson, opposition. Mark Conley, opposition. William Palmjulz, I apologize for messing that name up, but opposition. Frank, oh my goodness, Frank Flash, Flashener?
That's fine.
Opposition, thank you. I apologize. Darcy Welsh, opposition. Bill Priest, opposition. Richard Meggs Jr., opposition. Ladina Piper, opposition. Joanne Sigmund, opposition. Myers Bornstedt, opposition. Elizabeth Cordner, opposition. Nancy Hepburn, opposition. Melinda McManon, McManahan, opposition. Margaret Almond, opposition. Robert Burke, opposition. William Hepburn, opposition. Mark Jones, opposition. Amanda Dugan, I believe, opposition. Michelle Gawain, Gawon, opposition. Heidi Prater, opposition. Tony Angelov, opposition. Hubert Bates, opposition. Tanya Lynn, opposition. Donna Vidal, I believe, opposition. Thank you for people who, thank you to the folks who took time to fill out opposition form. We do have some speakers here. We will start off with, with Eric Stanley. You have filled out a speaker card. Mr. Stanley, would you like to speak?
Just answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Stanley is here to answer questions. He is with Bright Reilly, lives in nine oh one Carlisle Drive, Lewisville, Texas. He is in support. We have Justin Birch, Birch Michael? I'm sorry, Justin, if you were here, if you can clarify your last name for me, appreciate it.
Birch Meyer.
Birch Meyer, thank you so much. Four oh one Grail Castle, Lewisville, Texas, in opposition. Would you like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Justin Birch Meyer, four oh one Grail Castle. So unfortunately for me, I just moved into the neighborhood the end of March. And when I moved into the neighborhood, after I moved in, I find out this is going. I was never informed as such. I paid a premium to move into the reserve. Of course, I want to be on the golf course and then unfortunately, I'm the only house that my backyard faces this. I have no other yard to look out except I'm going to have a five-story, sixty-foot building staring down into my yard. So of course, this is personal to me. I was then informed that this came up last August. It was shot down, I think it was five to nothing. Everybody was against it. Came back in February and unfortunately, the residents of the reserve were not informed. But Mr. Stanley made the comment in our, in the February meeting that we sent it out to about six hundred residents, correct? Six hundred residents? But that was everybody to the realm, everybody to the north, that really, this doesn't affect as much as it does the reserve. Okay? Then Mr. Stanley stands here in February and tells us that, well, you live in a private neighborhood, we didn't know everybody's address, so we only sent it to the HOA.
Okay, all right, correct?
I sat up here in February, I said, Mr. Stanley, today's day and age, we have the internet. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the internet, but we all have the internet. I can find everybody's address in this room. So to me, to play that cheap game, that's uncalled for. You could have, you could have reached out to all.
I'm sorry, please adjust comments to the mayor, Mayor Protem, please, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, I understand, thank you.
Then it was brought up in the meeting also that while we, I don't know if it's forty acres or whatever, we put the tapestry up in the realm. Well, they're talking about adding on to it. Okay, go up there, go away from us to, you got three and a half acres here. I understand it's your property, it's your property, but man, think of the residents. Think of the residents that are over here in this cul-de-sac. The reserve was not notified, sent out six hundred envelopes, but none of them to us residents. We said we notified the management company because they were looking for the easy way out. They didn't want to deal with us, knowing it was shut down in August and you had a lot of residents present back in August. Again, I was not part of that, but I've been told we had a packed room. So we wanted to bypass everyone and that's why we sent it to the management company. If you actually cared about this community, you would have tried to sit down with us and talk to us to see what could be worked out and where everyone could potentially agree to. You knew it wouldn't be passed, so you wanted to bypass everyone in our neighborhood. Sadly, your owners are, your owners of the development company are also out telling people in the neighborhood, this is already a done deal. Well, if this is a done deal, why are we here today? But shame on you for ownership, telling the residents, this is a go. Once again, in my opinion, this certainly sounds like a lack of ethical business going on behind the scenes and it's unfortunate. Would have never thought Castle Hills with the Bright family that this would happen, but you know, we can't control everything, of course, as residents. This has been brought up in front of the city two times to only be shot down. And on the second round, you even admitted he didn't change much as far as developers and designers from McAdams. But you told us we were going to change things. So which one is it? Seems like we just go around and make up the rules as we go, kind of like they're doing with, with Boot Park in the reserve. Might be a little off-subject, but people paid a premium for that as well, just as all of us pay a premium to live in a gated community. But now we're going to save the environment at Boot Park and let Bermuda grass grow native. And Bermuda grass is not a native grass, it has to be maintained. So the aesthetical piece of now you got Boot Park and a six-story building, I mean, again, we're not trying to sit down with any of the residents. We're trying to bypass us by going across the street. As far as I noticed, we showed the signs up here, y, y, you know, with the rezoning or what those signs were, it's like they strategically placed them to face a wave from oncoming traffic that would be going, I guess, maybe northeastbound. And then you have the little sign right behind it. So in my opinion, it seems like they're strategically placed so people don't see them. Just, I think we need to consider ethics with all of this. Unfortunately, I think we're trying to turn a blind eye to that, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. City Secretary, I just noticed I have three cards over here that say blue card on them. Is that because we ran out of blue cards? These are, okay, so let me read these off too. We also have Corey Johnson, an opposition. We have Scott Johnson, an opposition. And we have Carol Hummer, an opposition. Thank you. So next we have a series of cards here I will call in, in order. We have, you guys may have noticed that we have broken a little bit of tradition here. We are allowing, I think, eight minutes, ten minutes for speaking today, is that right?
It's your decision.
Yep, we'll go, we'll go, we'll go eight and see if we need more. So I'm going to call, please, again, Tom, Tom Rox. When I put these on, maybe I can get the names better. Tom Roche, please state your name and full address for the record.
Yes, Thomas Roche, twenty-eight, twelve-hundred Nights Drive. Thank you, Mayor Protem and City Council for the time tonight. Mr. Ludke now says that the main thing in this proposal is about the driveway now. It's not about the five-story building. The main thing for us residents certainly is and continues to be the major change in the development plan from small, separate retail pads to a sixty-foot-tall, five-story apartment building. Just to note, on May fifth, that's two weeks ago, the staff memo, to his credit, authored by Mr. Ludke, seemed accurate and clear. I'll quote directly from that. The proposed changes constitute a major modification because the proposal, proposed project removes buildings and changes site circulation. The three prior public meetings were clear that the main thing is the change in buildings as well. So, so tonight, I know we've changed something about that, something has happened over the past two weeks to modify that. So, okay, let's move on. Joyce, my wife, and I agree with the comments that are going to be made shortly by the rest of our neighbors and the comments just made by, by Justin. We do not oppose development on this lot. No objections to something more akin to the original multi-pad concept, not this intrusive major change that will rise sixty-four feet above the level of our front porch and direct line of sight. You have copies of some pictures that we passed out ahead of time that I'll be referring to now. I want to start with slide two. The issues I will describe are a little bit different and happened prior to annexation from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty. So this council may have very little awareness of them. And this was submitted via ecomment back in August as well, so it's not the first time this has come up. But this is about the soil. Multiple major water-related soil collapses have happened within four hundred feet of this proposed build site. We've been there for all of them, though similar failures could make a five-story build uninhabitable and a rail line unusable at some point in the future. Given this history of failures, the idea of a five-story building on unstable soil should be out of the question. To orient you, Parker Road is shown at the top of that photo, slide two. You have the subject property clearly marked, you have the existing rail line, you have the Hundred Nights Drive cul-de-sac. And all the yellow arrows indicate the failures that have occurred over a series of years. And again, these are all four hundred feet from the proposed build site. There's been three landslides, three collapsed walls, two foundation issues, learned of a third foundation issue just yesterday, a rail line sink as well. Slide three. Landslide number three is the most recent that happened in June of two thousand and twenty. Two million pounds of soil slid down while damaging three homes. Slide four shows our home. Our neighbor's home was similar. Slide five. Underground water flows were found during the rebuild. Underground water flow. Many of the seventy-four pier drillings to stabilize the hill also hit water. Slide number six. During a Castle Hills Water District meeting in September two thousand and twenty while discussing this landslide, we heard for the first time about an earlier landslide that happened back in two thousand and eight that we had previously been unaware of. This was directly from a former Bright Development employee. This is a direct quote from the audio recording of that meeting. When I built the slope, it failed. It failed before any homes were built or lots were sold. There was a discussion with the developer that these lots should not be sold and homes should not be put on these lots. The soil was a known problem. The developer sold the lots, homes were built, no structural walls were included, no water drainage system was included, no stabilizing piers were put into the hill. Slide seven. It took twelve years, but finally, a proper soil evaluation was done and a structural design completed. My ask of council is to not ever allow a five-story building on this soil. Any build of this kind should have the right soil stabilization work done by the developer at the start, not after years and a series of predictable failures. Please do not let sixty families and multiple businesses experience what we have experienced just four hundred feet away. Our city deserves developers that do the right things in the right way. Could this project be done? Certainly yes. We've all seen it drawn on a piece of paper. Could be done. Should it be done? Absolutely not. Certainly not in the opinion of the residents. Will it be done? Well, that's up to you. You get a vote, so you can say no. We appreciate the checks and balances that are now in place to ensure that Castle Hills development is done in a responsible and transparent way. I have just one more point that, that I want to make as I conclude. On May fifth, two weeks ago, in this very room, Mr. Stanley sat exactly where he's sitting now and he requested and received a two-week delay to prepare additional information about this development proposal. I decided at that point I'd wait on my comments till tonight. Now we're looking at another delay. I'm going to give my comments tonight and I'm going to be back in two weeks and give them again. That night, as you recall, a lot of residents from the south of Parker Reserve Community attended, just like we have this full room tonight. Pretty much unanimous opposition to the initiative. Three of these residents spoke and accurately assured the council that no one in the reserve community ever got an invitation to this February fifth community meeting that the north of Parker residents attended. And we had no, no inkling of a meeting. It's interesting though, because he knew that two weeks ago and he knew the size of the opposition in the room, but since then, no attempts been made to talk with us, to understand what in the world we're worried about in the past two weeks. He had time, could have done that, no. One of the questions I would, I would have in addition to everything else we're going to talk about on this is where's the park? In this development, where's the park? It's not there. Certainly not on the grounds in this lot. Certainly not on the grounds in this lot. I know the city of Initiative has a park, or City of Louisville has an initiative about 10-minute walk to the park. Certainly not a mandate for developers, but it's a strategic imperative of the city. So think about this. 60 families come with children. Where are they going to play? Well, here's their choices. They're kind of landlocked. You got the railroad tracks. Want the kids playing down on the railroad tracks in the back of the complex? You got a wall between there and the rest of Castle Hills, so they can't, can't go south. Indian Creeks to the east, don't want them playing in a floodplain or in a creek that becomes a raging river, if you haven't seen it, with just a little bit of rain. That leaves crossing Parker Road to find a park on the north side of Parker. Do we want children living in this apartment building, going outside to play, and they got to cross Parker Road? I don't care a traffic light or not, I wouldn't want my kids or grandkids doing that. So, so we got to think about, think about that. So it's a tragedy waiting to happen. So listening to the residents about developments directly impacting them is perhaps not a very high priority for Bright, Bright Development. They will likely have future development proposals before this very council, so, and they may need, may need a little more coaching now about how to engage the community. Trust matters, and it's easily lost. And there's been a lot of trust lost by us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roche. Any questions, Mr. Roche? Thank you. I, I, I do have one question for you, actually, so I'm trying to work, because I remember, I was actually on the 1B Water District Board when this happened.
Absolutely.
Dan, I think, I think I came to your house and looked at this.
Yes, you did, sir. Thank you very much.
What you're not seeing here is on the other side of this, facing outwards from that land, that landslide was the golf course.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes, it's on the backside of our house, our front porch faces the development property.
So we had, we had private land on one side, we have the golf course on the other. Do you recall who wound up paying for that repair? Because I know.
Well, it's quite a story.
Yeah, it was, in the end, it wound up being the residents of Castle Hills because there's a little easement that was granted at some juncture.
Right.
This is a question I've got for, for Richard and staff, is that I'd like to make absolutely sure if there's anything that happens, we don't have, somehow have the city responsible for this. This is, this is a great point. You know, the soil has been shown to be unstable, and I have concerns there may be some easement and some documents somewhere that if something like this happens to the building, it becomes a city problem to go fix. So I, I just want to make sure that we, we cover all bases on that, please.
Based on our experience, ultimately, the way it turned out is the taxpayers footed the major, major portion of the bill in Castle Hills. Based on my experience, the HOA will be blamed, the railroad will be blamed because of the vibration or something, so the floodplain will be blamed, Corps of Engineers should pay for it. Everybody will be to blame except Bright, taking accountability. And ultimately, they'll want to use taxpayer money to fix this, too. So just be aware. We've seen it all once.
Thank you, Mr. Roche. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Georgia Smiley, here to speak in opposition. Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Georgia Smiley, 401 Crown of Gold. Thank you, Mayor Protam, for allowing me to speak tonight in the City Council. First thing I'd like to do is have everybody that is a resident of the Reserve neighborhood please stand up. It's an impressive showing. This is, we keep showing up at this because we, we're passionate about this, and there's a lot of confusion going on as far as what is being presented and what's not being presented. So I'm going to focus a lot on the agenda. I did reach, go to the website and spent a lot of time on the website because there's tremendous amount of information out on that website. So as we all know, at the August 19th City Council meeting, we met to discuss the issue. I would like to remind everyone that this request has been denied at least three times so far. P&amp;Z meeting on 8/6, the council meeting on 8/19, and the P&amp;Z meeting again on April 15th of this year. Now, it appears in tonight's council agenda, item number one under the public hearing, that the administrative comments reflect some new reasons that we are here tonight discussing this issue. Some previous wording has been modified, in my opinion, to fit tonight's presentation on behalf of the developer, to make everyone believe that we are here discussing a totally different reason regarding this project. So I'm going to read a couple of comments from tonight's agenda. One, "The concept plan for this area is vague but indicates several lots around a cul-de-sac." But in previous administrative comments, previous meetings at P&amp;Z and/or council meetings, that comment stated that several lots or buildings are reflected in the original concept plan. The words "or" buildings have been removed from tonight's agenda item because, in my opinion, it's an attempt to make everyone believe that this property was never intended to have multiple buildings, even though many discussions with P&amp;Z, City Council, the developer, and the residents of the Reserve have many times talked openly about the original concept plan, calling out eight separate buildings. At no time in the past discussions, and there have been many, has anyone stepped forward, such as the developer, to state that the concept plan was just reflecting possible parcels within the site and not multiple buildings. So in my opinion, it's very odd, all of a sudden, tonight's memorandum is attempting to redirect our thoughts from a five-story mixed-use building to a discussion about circulation. That memorandum goes on to state, "Now, a single mixed-use building is proposed." Well, based on what I've pulled off of the city's website from various past meetings regarding this issue, this proposed concept is not new. I have previous concept plans that I've pulled off that reflect a single structure on the site. Additionally, it states, "The only factor under consideration with this concept plan amendment is the internal site circulation." Well, again, I have many previous concept plans from previous meetings that they're using the same concept plan as they've presented tonight. Okay? So I think that, in my opinion, this attempt to state that we are only here to discuss or approve internal site circulation is an attempt for the developer to mislead everyone. The memorandum goes on to state that the applicant will also be required to install a traffic signal on Parker Road, which will improve traffic flow and benefit the surrounding community. If we recall from the August 19th City Council meeting, this was brought up and discussed briefly as everyone believes a traffic light at Essex and Parker Road is needed. However, TechDoc controls this issue. And do we know if they would even approve a traffic signal? So while it sounds good, and the developer says he'll pay for it, would it really happen? The memorandum also shows a picture, which they showed up earlier, of the current concept, which is reflecting the possible eight parcels and a proposed concept, which, as I stated above, is not new and has existed for some time based off on what I've pulled off of the city's website, but it's now being called a proposed concept. In the April 15th P&amp;Z meeting, the planning manager, Michelle Berry, provided a detailed memorandum to the P&amp;Z Commission. It states that very little has changed from the developer's new request. In a nutshell, we learned that the developer added a site plan and a landscape plan at that meeting. Mrs. Berry's memorandum went on to provide some background information. Some of that background information said, "The PD was adopted to ensure that zoning in Castle Hills is tailored to match existing development and that future development is compatible and consistent with the existing development." Now, this is very important to remember because this five-story development would not be compatible nor consistent with the existing development. Mrs. Berry's memorandum goes on to say that the planning director determined that the proposed changes constitute a major modification because the proposed project removes buildings and changes site circulation and traffic patterns that impact connectivity within the site and to the surrounding development. As I stated previously, I have printouts of previous meetings that clearly show the developer is hoping to build a multi-story building on this piece of property. So in my mind, these proposed changes are not new. More memorandum statements. During the adoption of the original PD, it was uncertain as to what would be built on the property. The concept plan showed eight pad sites, this is from her memorandum, each containing a commercial building. The site has several development challenges, including an odd shape, a floodplain, grade, limited access to FM 544, limited visibility, adjacency to railroad right-of-way, and utility easements. Again, there have been numerous opportunities for the developer to clarify this original concept plan, but he has never stated anything to the contrary. But now in tonight's meeting, we are being told otherwise. If you drive east on Parker Road from 121 past all the Castle Hills developments, you will find many single-family homes, a school, community center, and some commercial properties that sit on each side of Parker Road. None of these buildings are more than two stories tall, and they don't take away the privacy from their surrounding neighbors. This lot is much higher in elevation than any other buildings or homes on Parker Road. A five-story building on this site is out of character for this area and is just not appropriate, given the style of residential that it will surround. What is more appropriate are one- to two-story buildings that are in alignment with existing developments. Another matter to consider is the sightlines of the homes across Parker Road that a five-story building would impact. They will also have all the privacy issues that we will have, they just don't know it yet. Their backyards back onto Parker Road. While the developer states that the proposed building is 350 feet from the nearby single-family structures, we all need to be aware that the railroad track that separates the proposed development and the residential area is well below grade. Remember, Parker Road was rerouted and built up to go over the railroad, so now that land is at a much higher elevation than what is around it. So it will stand out and feel like it is way more than the proposed 60 feet in height. Another important fact to be aware of is that during the April P&amp;Z meeting, I questioned the P&amp;Z staff about all the traffic studies that have been mentioned so many times in the August meetings and again in the April meeting. What we learned was the most recent study was done in 2014. That was 11 years ago, and a lot has changed in 11 years. This current memorandum states that the developer has submitted a draft traffic impact analysis, TIA, to P&amp;Z in April following that P&amp;Z meeting, and the TIA is currently under review. So if this were your home that you purchased years ago with a concept plan reflecting eight small buildings and without any knowledge of a potential five-story building, and now a developer wants to put this structure in your backyard, how would you feel about it? I want to also ask, what is the point of a concept plan? If a developer can change it whenever they want to, the surrounding community has no protection, in this case unless the developer can get everyone to agree with their plan. But in this case, we greatly oppose the five-story mixed-use building. It is my belief that each of you are charged with doing the right thing for the entire community, and a five-story building is definitely not the right thing to do in this matter. And I'll leave you with a few thoughts. This thought I stole from Ms. Francesca Alwely on the P&amp;Z Commission. As a Notarian, she follows the Rotary Week 408 test. Is it truthful? The developer has not been forthcoming with so many issues surrounding this development, just like the 11-year-old traffic study, and using that to meet with the residents on the north side of Parker Road to convince everyone there are no issues. Is it fair to all concerned? No. Especially when you purchased your home, all you had to look at, if you were concerned with a possible future development, was a concept plan that everyone has deemed it consisted of eight garden-style commercial buildings.
Ms. Smiley, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Yeah. Does it provide goodwill and better friendships, not for the homeowners, only for the developer? Is it beneficial to all concerned? No, only to the developer and the city. And last but not least, for me, just because you can doesn't mean you should.
Thank you so much. Do we have, do we have any, any questions for, for Ms. Smiley? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Patty Hoff. You are here to speak in opposition, I believe, correct? Would you please approach and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Patty Hoff. I live at 273300 Knights Drive in Louisville. I'm here to speak in opposition, and most of my comments have already been addressed or will be addressed, so in order to respect everyone's time, if possible, I would like to yield my time to Rick Vidal. My concerns are mainly for safety, for property values, for trust issues that we have with the developer, and for all the things that have been said, aesthetics and so forth. So I would like to, if I possibly can, yield any time that I have remaining to, to Rick, should he need it.
So you are certainly not required to speak for the entire 10 minutes, but we can't have somebody speak for 19 minutes. So 10 minutes is what we have for, for Mr. Vidal to speak.
Okay.
Okay?
So I will, I will say that my concerns just mimic that of, of everyone that you have written comments for on the website and, and whatever else has been said.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So we have Mr. Rick Vidal. If you'd please approach. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. It's Rick Vidal, 280100 Knights Drive. Mr. Mayor Protam and Council, thank you for letting us speak tonight. Obviously, there's a, a lot of opposition here, and it is very much unanimous among the entire neighborhood. I would like to open with a few items in the staff memorandum that need to be addressed. The first, and I quote, "A previous request similar to this was made in 2024. City Council denied 5-0 the previous concept plan amendment for the 3.459-acre area south of Parker Road, FM 544, on August 19th, 2024. Since that denial, the applicant has met with the neighborhood and provided some additional information on the development." That is a false statement. No one that's in this room tonight has heard diddly about a meeting with the developer. We have been waiting for that since August of last year. We would welcome the opportunity to have a meeting because there are so many items or so many issues that need to be addressed, that are not being addressed. And, you know, the only thing that we can do is voice our concerns to the developer. The second, and again, I quote, "The concept plan for the southern subarea of the Realm subdivision is being amended in its entirety per ordinance number blah, 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 and notices were sent out accordingly. The planning director has somewhat addressed this, but that's just some hooey. There's no excuse for not including the south side of Parker Road in notices. We are the ones in the shadow of this building. And if we hadn't been, had our radar up to notice the sign that went up on the, on Parker Road, we wouldn't have been here tonight. We wouldn't have known about it." Let me see here. So let's talk about the southern subarea of the Realm Sub-District. This, and I'm glad this slide is still up because the yellow outline is the property in question. The tree line you see running through that, that was the edge of Parker Road prior to it being realigned in 2018. This property didn't exist prior to 2018, yet it's being included in the Realm Sub-District. At the time this property ceased to be part of, at, at that time, when they realigned it, this property ceased to be part of the Realm and was physically divorced from the Realm by a six-lane divided thoroughfare. I argue this property should no longer fall under the Realm Development Plan and should be included in the Castle Hills Primary Development Plan. That's the neighborhood that is now adjoining in its residential, single-family homes. It's not neither compatible nor cohesive with the existing zoning. The other item is, Ms. Smiley addressed this very well in that all of a sudden, this is only about traffic flow on this property. And up until now, three times, the developer has had an opportunity to correct this if it's an error, that it never was eight individual plots here on this property, and that he has free rein to build a five-story apartment building here without having to have approval. Now, I'll Now, all of a sudden, in the two weeks since the last meeting, which was continued, the staff memo has changed, the agenda item has changed, though, well, it has to a degree. It says, "The concept plan for this area is vague but indicates several lots around a cul-de-sac. Now, a single mixed-use building is proposed." That's in for tonight's agenda, so story's not straight, as far as what it is we're here to talk about. This is a major change, well beyond just the traffic flow pattern on the property. The fourth item in the staff memo I'd like to highlight, and again I quote, and it's already been kind of mentioned, "This site has several development challenges, including an odd or irregular shape, floodplain, grade variation, limited access on FM 544, limited visibility, adjacency to railroad right-of-way, and an 80 to 200, or 80 to 120-foot-wide electrical utility easement that lies adjacent to the railroad right-of-way." I couldn't have said that better to make my case. This is a totally inappropriate use of this property. But let's not stop there. There's one more descriptor that needs to be added to this list of challenges. Most importantly, it is immediately adjacent to a single-family home residential neighborhood to both the north and the south. So here's some, some observations from around Castle Hills. There are over a dozen apartment complexes within a mile and a half of this property. Actually, there's about 14 to 16, I can't, it's hard to tell, because there's so many, and they all run together. But here's, here's the thing. Only two of them are built adjacent to single-family homes. And one of them, the apartments were there long before the homes were. So if you're going to buy a home, you know what you got. The other is being built concurrently with the homes. So again, if you're going to buy a home, you know what you have. This brings up the old airport analogy of, you know, if you, if I buy a home or build a home next to an airport, I have no right whatsoever to complain about the noise. But if you want to build an airport by my home, you're going to hear from me. And that's exactly what's going on here. Everybody's already talked about how they've been here for 12, 14 years, and it's always been a plan for the eight pads, single-story, garden variety office buildings, office retail. The sign out front, the for-sale sign, says "For Sale Retail." Doesn't say "For Sale Five-Story Apartment Building." But the rest of these apartment complexes are all built adjacent to a freeway, a commercial property, another apartment building, a major power line easement, or a major drainage area, both are natural barriers, and none of them are wedged into a single-family home residential neighborhood. With the challenges already noted, why is it so important to squeeze this building into this place where it obviously does not belong? "The damage that would be done to our community is extensive, and we are a private, quiet, peaceful, and safe gated community. With a 60-foot-tall, 60-unit apartment building looming over our homes, the privacy we cherish would be lost. Thirty of those units will be looking directly into our yards, our garages, our homes. The other 30 units will have the same view, but to the north. We are concerned about the safety of our neighborhood when our comings and goings are there to be observed 7 by 24." I'm going to jump ahead here, because we've already talked about a lot of this, but the traffic on 544 is absolutely a concern. I also have some photos that I will hand to you as I step away. The last two show the driveway view on 544. Sightline is impossible. The other one is of a single-family home 200 feet plus from a five-story apartment building.
I'm sorry, real quick, we'll, we'll pause your time for just a moment. Ms. Secretary, can you grab those, please, for us? Why don't you just bring them up here, I'll take them. Sorry. Thank you. These are all the same foot?
No, those, those are views in every direction, from ground level standing where that building would be. The difference between what those and the ones that were shown by the developer are that those were shot with a 35-millimeter camera, 50-millimeter lens. That best represents the perspective of the human eye. So there's no trickery there, no wide-angle lens, which makes things look farther away and smaller. So it's very telling. The other one, the next to last, is the view of the driveway looking east on Parker Road, and you can see how much distance you have coming over that bridge. And then the last one is the, what it would look like from our backyard, frankly. Okay, sorry, let me get started back here. In summary, this is a small, irregularly-shaped lot in the middle of a single-family home residential area that didn't exist seven years ago. The original plan to use for this lot was acceptable to the community and acceptable for the size, shape, and location of the property. Any use change of this property must take into consideration the adjacent neighborhoods and be integrated into the neighborhood. The five-story apartment building is not integrated and would set a precedent for apartment construction in Castle Hills being adjacent to single-family home residential areas. I've got one minute to bring up a very important point. Having said all this, there is one more subject that must be brought to the, to light, and it is the little, a little bit disturbing. I had someone approach me who shared something they heard from the Brights. It was earlier this year before the rezoning sign went up. What this person said they heard directly was that this proposal is coming back around, and that this time it is a done deal. I somewhat dismissed it, but did not ignore it. It took over a month, but the proposal did come back around in April. Now, fast forward a couple of months, and a second person has come forward to me with essentially the same information, that they heard directly from one of the Brights, and that this is a done deal. I'm not sure how a statement like that can be made, and I question openly how some, a statement like that can be made when there is a process that must be followed, and it's this process here. So if it's a done deal, why are we even having this meeting? And I close with the question of ethics. Yes, the developer can, by the letter of the law, and taking advantage of apparently a loophole, build a five-story apartment building in a location where it does not belong. We, the residents, would welcome a meeting with the developer, and I feel there should not be a final vote by the city council until that happens. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vidal. Do you have any, any questions from the council? Any questions, sorry? Thank you so much, appreciate you. Okay, last, I believe last, but I will make an appeal out to the audience here. Phil Smiley, approach.
My name is Phil Smiley, I live at 401 Crown of Gold. Members of the council, Mayor Protem Kelly, thank you for allowing me to speak. I feel a little bit like a preacher on a Sunday. We've gone through all the music and all the fun part of Sunday service. We've got a cowboy game kicking off in about 20 minutes, and we've got to get the heck out of here. So I may repeat a few things that some of the speakers said, but I'm going to get through it as quickly as I can, so bear with me. One year ago, I was elected to serve on the Reserve Neighborhood Association Board, and just last month was appointed as the president. I have learned a ton, and some things I've learned I don't want to know. My purpose for speaking to you this evening is to voice a major feeling of this community, and that is one that we have of distrust. Distrust is defined as the feeling that someone or something cannot be relied on. The first time these feelings surfaced for me was during and following the city council meeting last August. In that meeting, Mr. Stanley, who represented Breco Land LLC, attempted to separate himself from the many tentacles of the Bright organization by saying, "All I do is build homes." We all know that's not true. If you review the records of the Texas Comptroller's Office, it'll tell you that Mr. Stanley serves as an officer of many companies, some of which affect all of our residents. One such organization is the Castle Hills Master Association, or as I will call them moving forward, CHMA. This misleading statement was called out by Ms. Cade in that meeting, and we greatly appreciate that, her calling that out. In that August meeting, you were made aware that our community knew nothing of the proposed usage and zoning change. You denied the developer's request by unanimous margin. You directed the developer to meet with the residents and come back with a workable solution for all parties. Hopefully, you watched the April 15 Planning and Zoning Meeting where this exact issue was addressed, and if you did not, let me bullet point for you what was said. One, our residents received no notification as any, as to any developer, community meeting. When asked by the P&amp;Z Board, Mr. Stanley acknowledged that the residents north of Parker were notified by mail individually, but the reserve residents, those of us that live south of Parker Road, were not. Mr. Stanley stated that because we live in a gated community, and because we are, and we're treated a little bit different. Mr. Stanley stated that not only, that they only sent out a notice to the property management firm, and that's been said tonight. Our board and our property manager, personal, our manager that works with us, know nothing of this. That evening, I asked and was granted the ability to speak to the board, and I told him what I'm about to tell you. The residents north of Parker get their mail delivered from the United States Postal Service to the Castle Hills Mail Center. The Mail Center then delivers the mail door-to-door to the individual resident's home. The reserve residents, those of us south of Parker, get our mail delivered from the United States Postal Service. It is delivered to the Castle Hills Mail Center. The Castle Hills Mail Center then delivers the mail door-to-door to our individual residents' homes. There is absolutely no difference. Lastly, regarding the gate to our community, the Castle Hills Mail Service has full gate access, just as they do to other communities within the Castle Hills community. Also, if I am not mistaken, a developer is required to provide proper notice to homeowners, not an HOA, or not an HOA management company. And like Justin said, there is ways to get to us. He know, we know where we are. I mean, y'all know how to get to us. Lastly, my final example of distrust that our residents have and are still experiencing is with the developer and their business unit, CHMA, of which Mr. Stanley is an officer. Mr. Mayor Protem, may I give you some small information packets? I'd see, we'd like to see if you could distribute to all the council.
I'm going to hold back one for myself. You just give me the whole stack, I'll pass them over, thank you.
What I'll be talking about, some of this will be referencing some of the documents that you're getting. CHMA has the legal obligation to preserve or improve Lot 16X Block A within the reserve community. This lot and block is known as the Reserve Lake Park or Boot Park by the residents of Castle Hills. Let me share with you a couple of key facts. In August of 2007, the reserve was born. Our restrictive covenants were executed by the developer and recorded with Denton County. The park was promoted and sold by the developer as an amenity to our community. Also note that lots backing up to the park were sold as premium lots, and they were priced accordingly. For the past 17 years, CHMA has maintained the park as required by our restrictive covenants. So then you say, what's the issue? Well, the issue began in 2024 Castle's annual meeting. Mr. Stanley announced that Boot Park will now become a no-mo zone, or CHMA will deed the land to the reserve for the residents to maintain as they wish, which they legally cannot do. Also, per the meeting minutes, Mr. Stanley alluded to asking Stacy Anaya in Parks and Recreation for her help with a no-mo zone. Since that annual master HOA meeting, I attended a meeting with Ms. Anaya and learned, one, preparations required to have a proper no-mo zone. Two, that she was not, she's not been asked, nor does she have any authority to require CHMA to implement a proper no-mo zone. Since the master HOA meeting, all subsequent communications from Castle Hills Master, including a meeting with Eric Stanley directly, have focused on two key themes. One, I'm not putting another dollar into Boot Park. Or two, CHMA is going to let the park go, which is a floodplain, go native. Don't let the floodplain comment distract you, because parts of the golf carts that they, the developer centered the whole Castle Hills development around isn't a floodplain. I have a comment in writing, I have this comment in writing in case you want to see it, right? So I actually have it in writing, I can get it to you if I need to. On April 21 of this year, after residents complained, the city code compliance department sent a first notice to CHMA. A second notice was sent early last week, and predictably, last Wednesday, just in time for tonight's meeting, they completed a partial mo, a boot park. Nowhere near what you would call preserve or improve, but enough if you were to drive by, you think, oh, it's mo. I provided you with pictures of before and after Wednesday's mo. Mr. Stanley, representing the developer in CHMA, has said, and maybe will tell you again, that they are doing this because it's not fair for all residents to pay for the maintenance of a park, because the park is not accessible to all residents of Castle Hills. He and CHMA failed to acknowledge that they're the ones responsible for setting up their own legal obligation. The last thing I'll say about this, in my opinion, the issue is not really about money with CHMA. It's not about the money that they pay to maintain the park. It's all about what like Tom Roche alluded to and stuff. It's about the liability. And the city is now experiencing with retain, what the city is now experiencing in Castle Hills is retaining wall failures. And as well as you, and then, and of course, you saw Tom's presentation, in my opinion, it's all about future liability. Members of the council, hopefully you get the gist as why our residents distrust, distrust this developer. Our community is tired, and will continue to fight to hold the bully accountable to do what they commit and are obligated to do. Council, I asked you if this is a trustful organization that you would want to do business with. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Thank you. So there were a lot of cards up here. Did I miss anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Everybody has spoken. Did I miss anybody who wanted to record a note of opposition? Okay. Per protocol, Mr. Stanley, you have five minutes to rebut if you'd like to, or have a representative rebut anything that was said here.
I probably shouldn't.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any questions from council? Okay, then I would like a motion to continue the public hearing.
Move to continue the public hearing until the next meeting.
The second?
June 2nd.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you so much, everybody who came out. Thank you, Mr. Stanley, thank you, Richard, thank you, everybody who came out to speak with us. Item D, visitor forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor, Mayor Protem, rather than individual council members or staff. We'll pause for just a moment, let everybody filter out who likes to filter out. Okay. Visitor forum, item D. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor, rather than individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to the beginning of their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impregnant, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping defeat, whistles, yells, clapping, assembly demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the council is restricted from discussing and taking any action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Do we have any speakers? Ms. Secretary, thanks so much. All right, moving on, item E, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests for a member of the public to request removal of item. A speaker card or comment must be filled out, submitted to city secretary. City secretary, do we have any requests to remove agenda item? We have no requests from, from council to remove agenda items. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
Everybody please vote. Passes 6-0. All right. Moving on. Regular hearing, item nine. Consideration of alternative standards associated with landscaping standards for Sam's Club on 10.51 acres located at 751 West Main, West Main Street, legally described as Valley Ridge Business Park West. Lot 4-R1-R Block C. Zoned general business, GB, as requested by Kobe Chambles of Kimberly-Horn on behalf of the owner. Walmart Stores number 18 dash 6381, 25 dash 04 dash 6 dash alternative standard. Administrative comments. Sam's Club is proposing landscaping changes, including planting 16 additional trees. To reduce water consumption, River Rock is proposed as the only ground cover in the parking lot landscape islands, which are currently turf and trees. Section 6 dot 8 dot 1 and section 8 dot 3 dot 4 both require that parking lot landscape islands be a minimum of 50% plant cover. The alternative standard requested is to reduce the required 50% plant cover in each landscape island to zero, a 100% reduction. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval six-zero on May 6, 2025. The recommendation is the city council approved alternative standards as set forth in the caption. Richard Lukey, Planning Director, is here for any comments or any questions. Do you have any questions? Okay, I need a motion.
I was just going to say, for some reason, I had in my head 18 new trees, but I'll take 16. 16 is good. So with that, I'll move to approve the alternative standards set forth in the caption.
Second?
Second.
Please vote. Passes six-zero. Thank you. Item 10. Consideration of alternative standards associated with landscaping standards for Starship Bagel on 10.807 acres located at 1108 West Main Street, legally described as Main Valley Shopping Center. Addition, Lot 1 Block A is on local commercial LC District, as requested by Oren Solomon of Starship Bagel on behalf of the owner, 15-85 Properties LLC. Administrative comments. Starship Bagel recently placed a shipping container behind their suite to help address space constraints. The applicant proposes to transform the shipping container into a permanent structure by bolting it down, adding exterior finish, ender roof, and creating an accessible entry. The Unified Development Code, UDC, requires a 30-foot landscape buffer, which the site does not currently meet. The request is to allow a new structure on a site that does not meet the landscape standard. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval six-zero on May 6, 2025. Recommendation from staff is that the city council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption. Richard Lukey, Planning Director, is available for questions.
I just had a comment. I just wanted to say, you know, kudos for the creativity to, you know, figure out how to make this work, because this is a very successful business that's local, and I'm just really glad that we were able to come to a creative solution so that they can stay in place.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the standards set forth in the caption.
Alternative standard as set forth in the caption.
We need a second?
Second.
Everybody, please vote. Motion passes six-zero. Item 11. Consider and take action on an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas authorizing the issuance of City in Louisville, Texas general obligation refunding improvement bonds series 2025 in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $18,100,000, awarding the sale thereof, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing execution and delivery of a paying agent... Did I miss a comment on item F10? I guess I did, actually. It looks like Jennifer Marvel actually just wanted to support the alternative standard, so... Apologies to Jennifer Marvel, I didn't mean to skip you like that. Would you like to say anything? All you can do is undo the, undo it of this juncture, so very good, okay. Fantastic, thank you. I apologize for missing you there. Okay, move back, let's see. Okay. Administrative comments. City staff is planning to issue $18.1 million in general obligation refunding improvement bonds this fiscal year. Authority for issuing bonds to be repaid from property taxes must be approved by voters. This authority was granted through the successful passage of the four bond propositions that were placed on the May 4, 2024 ballot. To allow flexibility in setting the sale date for the bonds, Hilltop Securities, the city's financial advisor, has recommended the council adopt a parameters ordinance, which will allow the city council to authorize the sale of bond obligations at a future date as long as specific parameters met. This provides the flexibility needed to ensure the issuance is sold when most practical and economically feasible. Authority granted by the ordinance expires one year from the date of approval. Projects to be funded through the issuance include work on the Purnell Red Bud Connection, Hough Fines Boulevard, and South Keighley Avenue, the Meadow Glen subdivision phases one and two, alley replacement program, LID Trail Project, and costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. A portion of the proceeds will also be used to refund the series 2015 and 2016 GO bond issues. City staff recommends approval of the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We need a motion? Questions or comments, I suppose?
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney?
This is an ordinance providing for the issuance of City of Louisville, Texas general obligation refunding and improvement bonds series 2025 in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $18,100,000, awarding the sale thereof, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and a deposit agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting provisions incident and relating to the subject and purposes of this ordinance.
Need a motion, please, sorry, I had to do that, please vote. Motion passes six-zero unanimously. Item 12. Consider and take action on an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Louisville, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding Improvement Bonds series 2025 in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $41,600,000, provided for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and escrow or deposit agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. Administrative comments. City staff is planning to issue approximately $41.6 million in Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding Improvement Bonds this fiscal year. To allow flexibility in setting the sale date for the bonds, Hilltop Securities, the city's financial advisor, has recommended the council adopt a parameters ordinance, which will allow the city council to authorize the sale of bond obligations at a future date as long as specific parameters are met. This provides the flexibility needed to ensure the issuance is sold when most practical and economically feasible. Authority granted by the ordinance expires one year from the date of approval. Planned projects to be funded through the issuance include additions and extensions to the city's Water Works and Sewer System and costs associated with the issuance of bonds. A portion of the proceeds will be used to refund the series 2012, series 2015, and 2016 Water Works and Sewer System bond issuances. City staff recommendation is city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Any comments, questions?
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Louisville, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds series 2025 in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $41,600,000, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and deposit agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
Please vote. Motion passes six-zero. Item 13. Consideration of resolution nominating one member to the Board of Managers of the Denko Area 911 District. Oh, I'm going to screw this up. Sue Temmel? Temmel? Former mayor of Copper Canyon, currently represents area municipalities of the Denko and the Area 911 District Board of Managers. Ms. Temmel's term expires on September 30, 2025, and she has not expressed interest in continuing to serve in this position. The district has requested that each participating city submit the nomination for candidate to represent their municipality by 5:00 PM on May 31, 2025. Steve Southwell has expressed interest in serving in this position. I think it would be an excellent choice. The recommendation is the city council approve the resolution nominating one member to the Board of Managers of the Denko Area 911 District as set forth in the caption above. We need a motion?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I move to approve the resolution nominating Steve Southwell to the Board of Managers of Denko Area 911 District as set forth in the caption.
Second.
Everybody please vote. Motion approved, six-zero. Item G, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. We'll start with, start with Councilman Meredith, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. No report, but I do want to thank the staff for the centennial trail groundbreaking and the centennial picnic we had. I think both of those went off well. I think we dodged a bullet with the weather, I think, and we got both of them in, so good news there.
Councilman Swire?
Yes, sir. I have a number of items for the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances. In the next, we have the acoustic jam session every Friday night, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. There's a number of activities going on or planned, conversations with artists. What Were They Thinking? Abandon Exhibition, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, May 25. And Conversations With Artists, What Were They Thinking? Portraits Exhibition, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, on June 1. And then, associated with those conversations are the exhibitions themselves. Abandon, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville through May 31. And Portraits, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, May 10 through June 7. And that is my report.
Thank you. City Attorney, City Secretary, will just go down the front.
Mayor Pro Tim, councilmembers, park fans. Just a reminder that over the Memorial Day weekend, we'll have all of our Lake Park traffic plan and operational plan up and running. Just a reminder to everybody, there is no alcohol allowed in Lake Park. We've been working with our police department for putting together an operational plan to remind people, if they get in the park with it, how to get rid of it. But also, as our Public Services Director will soon let you know, the lake levels are rising, and as you enjoy Lake Park, make sure that you take advantage of the free life jacket kiosks that we have to watch out for one another. And as those lake levels rise, understand that there are unseen dangers under the surface of that lake, and to take every precaution you can when enjoying your Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Just the lake report, we are at 100% full?
Yeah, all right.
Just 100%? Not 102%?
It only goes, you know, interestingly, it only says 100%, even when it goes higher. So it is a hair over.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and council, just to let you guys know, tomorrow we'll be holding a Coffee with a Cop event out at the Human Bean from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. That's at 1,001 West Round Grove Road, if you happen to be in the area. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green?
I think my thunder has been efficiently stolen, so I will yield the floor. But I will say, before you go out and celebrate Memorial Day, thank you, Stacy, for saying it, I'll say it again, because it's so important. Please wear your life jackets. If you're going to be out on the lake, please wear a life jacket.
I think I used up all my time in the last meeting. Since I'm in overtime, I will be quiet and pass it over to Councilwoman Kate.
Oh, I have a lot. She's saying, "Stop it." We had a lot this past week, though. And I want to congratulate all the employees that, oh, that got awards at the employee picnic. And then the tree planting Saturday, the tree planting, the trail groundbreaking, the picnic, then the Leela, that was just Saturday. Congratulations to everybody, and be careful out there with the weather.
I just wanted to let all of the council know that we are about to start applications, opening applications for the Steering Committee for Louisville 2035. That information is going to go out either tomorrow or the next day, and then we will ask for your help to recruit people that you believe would be good voices in the community. Last time it was brought to council, council took all of the applicants and put them on the Steering Committee. It's totally up to you whether or not you want to do it, but we are committed to getting a diverse and active voices in the room.
Thank you. So, real quick, there was so much that happened over, as already mentioned, on Saturday. It was a full-packed day. It's great to be part of a city that just can pack so much into one day and do it well. So I know that takes a lot of effort, so thanks, everybody does that. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the fact that we also were invited to Radio Sarabi, who went out to a celebration on Sunday. My wife, back there, was roped in doing a nice dance with sticks. So I have video, if anybody would like to see it. I think we, yeah, it was a fantastic experience out there, so. Anyway, thank you so much. We are, oh, I do need to mention the, we're mentioning the quarterly investment report from January 1, 2025 to March 31, 2025.
It's just attached for your reference. And you have to end closed session.
We are going to enter into closed session. City Attorney? What's that? I need to read out the, oh, where is it? Okay, okay. I was doing so good, I thought. In accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, City of Louisville, Texas versus Cameron County Housing Finance Corporation et al. Clause number 20-4665-367, 367 Judicial District, Denton County, Texas. Item 2, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to the city secretary position. And we will go into closed session. Is that telling you? All right, thank you. All right, as there's no more business to discuss, we are adjourned.